So, good morning, everybody. We welcome you to the October 3, 2023, meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Kendall if he would come forward to give us an invocation. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, we pause before we begin all of the business of the county to acknowledge you as God above all. And God, I just want to come and I want to ask you to be kind and gracious to us. I ask that you would lift up your face upon us and give us peace. Would you show yourself strong and bless us richly? And I pray all this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Reverend Kendall comes to us this morning from Friendship Community Baptist Church in Dunkirk, where I believe they hold a car show.
That's Dunkirk.
That's Dunkirk, sorry. I was trying to give you credit. Thank you very much for joining us today.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda as presented?
None.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, make a motion to approve and adopt the agenda as submitted?
Have a motion, a second, to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion hearing? None. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have a couple of public service announcements today. Excuse me. We have an honor flight operation coming into Calver County today to welcome home our senior war veterans. This evening, there will be staging a warm welcome home for 24 local veterans of World War II, the Korean War, and the Vietnam War as they return from their Capitol Region Honor Flight. And that's tonight at Dunkirk Park at 7:30. So, if you're interested, please attend. Commissioner Brasso is going to be there tonight representing the board, so.
And there are aides from 73 to 106 years old.
Wow. Yeah, sorry, I missed that. Yeah, thank you. And everyone knows last weekend was the Calver County Fair. We want to thank all the volunteers and all the county employees and all the members of the Sheriff's Office that helped to put on a very smooth Calver County Fair. Had no issues, had good weather, so I think they had a very good fair. And on October 9, is Columbus Day, where we recognize the historic voyage and arrival of the Italian explorer Christopher Columbus, who sailed to the Americas on October 12, 1492. And no, I wasn't there that day, Mike Hart.
I let him slide on the other age thing.
And I believe that's all I have. So, that will bring us to our swearing-in ceremony. Sheriff Cox.
Good morning, bisters.
Good morning.
Sheriff Cox, with the swearing-in ceremony this morning, I just want to say thank you for doing this, carrying this tradition out. Almost eight long months of these deputies have endured the academy. I want to thank my staff, the staff at the academy, for what they do for them. And it's a proud moment, not only for them, but for their family and our community. Just want to say thank you. Deputy Baxter, Deputy McWilliams, and Deputy Brown. And I think Ms. Smith, thank you for being here too also.
Okay, I'm gonna have you.
Yep.
I'm gonna have you raise your right hands, please. And you're gonna start by saying aye and state your name.
Aye, Detective McWilliams.
Aye, Derek Baxter.
Aye, Charles Brown.
Do you promise or declare?
Do you promise or declare?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office.
Execute the office.
Of Deputy Sheriff for Calver County.
Of Deputy Sheriff for Calver County.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
And that I will not.
And that I will not.
For luther or malice.
For luther or malice.
Delay any person.
Delay any person.
Applying to me.
Applying to me.
For any business.
For any business.
Belonging to the office.
Belonging to the office.
That I officiate in.
That I officiate in.
And that I will not.
And that I will not.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Ask, take, exact, demand.
Ask, take, exact, demand.
Receive from or charge to.
Receive from or charge to.
Others, other such fee or reward.
Other such fee or reward.
Whatsoever.
Whatsoever.
For any services.
For any services.
That I may do.
That I may do.
As Deputy of said office.
Of Deputy of said office.
And then I'm making out the office fees.
Making out the office fees.
I will not wittingly or willingly.
I will not wittingly or willingly.
Charge, charge other or higher fees.
Charge other or higher fees.
Than are allowed by law.
Than are allowed by law.
Congratulations.
If we could have the family members come forward. My daughter pinned me when it was elected sheriff, and I think this is a proud moment to allow a family member to pin the deputies, the badges on them. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Sure. Sure. You gotta know somebody.
Thank you.
Kobe's getting mine, son.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I want to congratulate the young woman and the two young men who are now police officers. Police, police service has a special place in my heart. My dad is a retired police officer, but I know Scott McWilliams' family in particular. I've been friends with his grandparents for 45 years. I've watched your dad, aunt, and uncle grow up to fine human beings, as I'm sure all three of you are. So, thank you for your service. Thank you for choosing this profession, and good luck.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That brings us to proclamations. And we have a long list of proclamations today. The first one is for the National Bullying Prevention Month. Commissioner Brasso?
Oh, here we go. Can we get Laura Kent, Rosalyn Gannis, and Virginia Basset to introduce yourselves and come on up?
Good morning, Commissioners. Laura Kent, Fiscal Manager, Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Virginia Basset from the Sheriff's Office, Administrative
Morning, Commissioners. I'm Rosalyn Gannis, the Social Media Program Coordinator with CMR.
Well, thank you, all three of you, for being here today. Bullying, we sure had it when I was a kid, but not to the extent that we have it now. To the lengths that individuals will go to hurt another human being. I'm old school. I've raised three kids. We believed in consequences to actions. I sure hope we're gonna see more of that in the future because for every action, there's a reaction, and you can't treat human beings the way some of these children are being treated. So, let me read the proclamation. Whereas bullying is a pervasive and harmful behavior that affects individuals of all ages, backgrounds, and communities, causing physical, emotional, and psychological harm, leading to long-lasting trauma, increased mental health issues, and a negative impact on the overall well-being and productivity of individuals, schools, workplaces, and communities. It affects everyone. It's a ripple effect. Whereas it is the responsibility of individuals, families, educators, community leaders, and policymakers to actively work together to prevent and address bullying in all its forms. And whereas each October National Bullying Month provides an opportunity to raise awareness about the harmful effects of bullying, promote kindness, empathy, and inclusion, and encourage communities to take proactive measures to prevent and respond to bullying. And whereas the Calver County government employees are entrusted to assist, protect, and attend to the needs of our citizens with professionalism, efficiency, and dedication to provide essential services and enhance the welfare of the community. The Calver Employee Representative Committee, the Employee Wellness Committee, and the Employee Recognition Committee are vested in ensuring a safe work environment physically, mentally, and emotionally. And whereas the well-being, dignity, and respect of our employees are paramount to fostering a healthy workplace where all employees can thrive, grow, and contribute to the betterment of our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the month of October be known as National Bullying Prevention Month in Calver County. We encourage all citizens to commit to the eradication of bullying in all its forms and work together to build a more inclusive community where every person can thrive without fear. Be it further proclaimed that we extend our continued support to the Calver Employee Representative Committee, Employee Wellness Committee, Employee Recognition Committee, and all who make strides to foster a workplace culture rooted in respect, kindness, and professionalism, given under our hands and sealed this third day of October 2023, signed by all five County Commissioners.
And the next proclamation is for National.
Oh, sorry, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good. Before we move on to the next proclamation, just as you're already aware, you've received blue ribbons. The color for National Bullying Month or Awareness is blue. And we do have pins to distribute to everyone in the room today, as well as to county employees, and just a way to bring awareness to it. And for county employees as well, there's now a new page of resources where they, if they receive it since, although it might be most famously something involved with children, it is something that adults do to each other, unfortunately. So, it's a way to bring awareness. We're bringing, there's new resources in one spot for Calver employees. And to show support for all Calver employees, yeah, I already have the ribbons that we'll all be having today as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. Mark Willis County Administrator. Also in tune with what we're doing right now, you know, we started this, it's a national advisement against bullying, but also for our county employees, just so that they know that we stand with them too. So, we are gonna bully our staff a little bit and tell them to hurry up, but we want to make sure that they understand that when these ribbons go out, it's not just a ribbon. It's the idea that we take care of each other. So, if you see bullying, report bullying, and we'll take care of it from there. That's what I do for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I guess that brings us to our next proclamation for National Cyber Security Awareness Month. Commissioner Hart?
Thank you, Mr. President. Stephen?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Stephen Pereira, Director of Technology Services. Calver County is very lucky to have a set of Commissioners that understand the value of having a strong cybersecurity presence. We're also, the county, very lucky to have our CISO, then Kat Poff, who is incredibly dedicated to cybersecurity. She literally eats, sleeps, and drinks cybersecurity. I know a few of you have seen her presentation and just know how passionate she is. And she's always getting out into the community to help people and raise more cyber awareness. And it's very important. The average downtime for a cybersecurity attack is 22 days. The average cost is four and a half million. Just the last 30 days, we had 504 attacks on our network from 20 different nation-states. And it only takes one cybersecurity attack to bring us down. And if you wonder where all the money goes, I read an interesting thing recently, and that the FBI said that 50% of North Korea's income comes from ransomware. So, next time you see the Rocket Man with his latest nuclear arsenal, you know that that's come, most of that money has come from cybersecurity attacks or ransomware. And I'll hand you over to Kat.
Good morning, Ms. Stevens. Stevie Callen. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. This is a really busy month. October has a lot of things going on, but it's also the start of Cyber Security Month, which is my most favorite month. Technology Services has a lot of things planned this month. We'll be sending out weekly emails that are going to have tips in them. We're gonna have games, just basically stressing some of the most important things that we can do to keep not only Calver County safe, but the whole nation safe. One of the things that we will be stressing, that I always go on and on about, is strong passwords, passphrases, if possible. Don't reuse your passwords. You guys all know that. We also, one of the most important things that we will be talking about this month is how to recognize red flags in emails. And we're actually going to have some fun games that we will be able to have people test their skills on how well they can spot the red flags in emails. Also, weekly and monthly updates, those are still important. They will always be important. There's just so many things that we can do, little, little things that we can do to add up to keep us safe. And hopefully, this will be a fun month, a month of learning. And I just thank you again for the opportunity to highlight cybersecurity. You guys are an awesome Board of County Commissioners, and we really feel your support. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on. So, my password, Mike, 1 through 6 is discouraged?
No.
I don't know. They said something you could remember, right? So, as you know, this is a scientific process, who they pick, who reads a proclamation. So, I was the obvious choice for technology thing here. So, I have a thing, no words longer than five, six letters, max. So, cybersecurity is a stretch. So, this is whereas the need for cybersecurity, education, and awareness is universal, impacting large corporations, small businesses, educational institutions, governmental agencies, nonprofits, and individual internet users alike. Vigilance and account monitoring, selective sharing of information, online regular software updates, robust password management, and the employment of antivirus software. Firewalls are among the best practices that can secure individuals and organizations from cyber threats like phishing, viruses, ransomware, and other malicious activities. Whereas maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility in which each of us has a critical role to play. Awareness of essential cyber hygiene will improve the safety of Calver County Government's information, infrastructure, and economy. Whereas, in celebration of the 20th Annual Cyber Security Awareness Month, all citizens are encouraged to reduce online risk by learning about cybersecurity so they can put that knowledge into practice in their homes, schools, workplaces, and businesses. The National Institute of Standards and Technology Cyberspace Workforce Framework offers a free publicity assessable resource that provides a practical approach to fortifying cybersecurity practices. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that October 2023 be recognized as National Cyber Security Awareness Month in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that all citizens and employees are urged to join in increasing awareness and understanding during that month of October and throughout the year, given under our hands and seal this third day of October 23, signed by all five Commissioners.
works to educate everyone about simple but important actions they can take when cooking to keep themselves and those around them safe. According to the National Fire Protection Association, cooking is the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries in the United States. Two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, and 31% of these fires resulting from unattended cooking, more than half of reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries, occurred when the victim tried to fight the fire themselves. No one understands the importance of this week more than our dedicated volunteers who play a pivotal role in safeguarding our citizens from fire-related risks and emergencies. Joining us today to show their support of educating our citizens on the importance of fire safety, we have North Beach Volunteer Fire Department Fire Captain Stephen Flowers, Prince Frederick Volunteer Fire Department Fire Chief Willie Gray, Solomon's Volunteer Rescue Squad and Fire Department President Terry Anderson, Dunkirk Volunteer Fire Department Fire Lieutenant Brian Purnell, Huntington Volunteer Fire Department Assistant Chief Mike Clark, St. Leonard Volunteer Fire Department Safety Officer Vanessa Deveries, Calvert County Rescue Dive Team Chief Dan Firth, Fire Rescue EMS Division Chief Jim Richardson. Together with your support, we can raise awareness and promote safe practices to reduce the number of preventable fires in our county, ultimately saving lives and resources.
Come on, come on forward, please. No speeches, Chief? No. He's practiced all last night. Well, thank you all for coming here today, and we thank you for your work you do in the community and all you do for us. So show of hands, how many has cleaned their chimneys out this year for getting ready for winter time? Okay, there you go. How about a fire extinguisher in the garage? Anybody? How about one in the kitchen?
We may need a pumper in there. Well, October is Fire Prevention Week, so I have a proclamation here and it reads as, whereas the week of October 8th through the 14th, 2023, has been designated Fire Prevention Week by the National Fire Protection Association, Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention is this year's official theme. And whereas fires are serious public safety concern and personal dwellings or the Calvert County citizens are the greatest risk of fire, the National Fire Protection Association has documented through its researches that one out of every three house fires starts in the kitchen, which makes cooking the leading cause of house fires. And whereas over 900 Calvert County Fire Rescue EMS volunteers are committed to ensuring the safety and security of the citizens and businesses in Calvert County through many hours dedicated to fire prevention, the preservation and continued success of the Calvert County's Volunteers' Fire and Rescue EMS Department is in the best interests of all Calvert County citizens. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the week of October 8th through the 14th, 2023 be known as Fire Prevention Week in Calvert County. Be it further proclaimed that all citizens are called upon to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce risk of kitchen fires. We urge the citizens of Calvert County to check the kitchens for fire hazards, use safe cooking practices, and support the volunteers in efforts not only during Fire Prevention Week, but every day, given under our hands and seal this third day of October 2023, signed by all five county commissioners. And there again, we want to thank all that you do each and every day. Thank you.
Commissioner Cox, to your fire extinguisher in the kitchen, so it's about two weeks ago, me and Carolyn are on the back porch. I think I told you, we had a little oil lamp, a little tiny decorative oil lamp, and the glass busted, and it hit this piece of wicker furniture, and in seconds, fireball. I run into the kitchen, I grab the fire extinguisher underneath the sink, and I never used one in my entire life. And, but I just aimed and fired, right? And thank God it put everything out. And normally the dogs are around us too. I don't know how they would have reacted, but thank God for some weird reason they weren't there. But I, you always hear about smoke and all that other stuff. My God, it's real. That whole back porch was just engulfed in smoke in no time, and it's not closed in, it screamed, you know? And I was just amazed how fast that fire spread and all that. But if it hadn't been for that fire extinguisher in the kitchen, I mean, I don't know, because no way a fire department would have got there in time. I mean, that stuff, it just spread like that, so yeah, it's real.
Thank you. Next proclamation that we have is for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Commissioner Grasso?
Jennifer, can you come up, please? Yes. Hi, Jennifer Moreland, Director of Community Resources. Our department is coordinating a presentation this afternoon about domestic violence awareness, and we're working with a lot of different agencies, and I'd like them to come forward as well, the representatives from those agencies. I'm going to save our comments for that presentation, because it's going to be a long one. But please join us at the mic and join me up here at the dais. And just say your name and the agency that you're with.
Hi, good morning. My name is Kalisa Marsh. I'm the manager of Safe Harbor Shelter.
Good morning, Bob Harvey, State's Attorney.
Good morning, Anthony Avalania, Assistant State's Attorney.
Good morning, Hammy Terrell, State's Attorney.
Good morning, Elsie Cole, Assistant State's Attorney.
Good morning, Allison Baker, Victim Advocate with the State's Attorney's Office.
I'm with her.
Best answer yet.
Good morning, Sarah Dishner, Clinical Supervisor of Calvert Center for Change.
Good morning, Melissa Colazo, Abuse Intervention Program Coordinator and Group Facilitator with Calvert Center for Change.
Good morning, Sharon DiMaggio with the Calvert County Sheriff's Office or as a Protection and Victim Services Coordinator.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Sheriff Cox with the Calvert County Sheriff's Office. Thanks for doing this again. Thank you.
Catherine Marsh, who is the Chair for our Commission for Women, was also going to be with us, but she was called to a meeting between the Army and a national advocacy group discussing this very issue of domestic violence. We look forward to joining you later on today for the domestic violence presentation.
Well, I wanted to share a story with you before I read the proclamation. A person very close to me, as a matter of fact, we were raised first cousins, our dads were brothers. And I was in her wedding. She's married 20 some years, gets a divorce. She was a battered wife for almost every day she was married to that man. I saw what it did to her son and how it crippled him emotionally for the rest of his life. And I asked my cousin, I said, how could this happen? I said, our dads weren't like that. We never experienced anything like that. And she said, Catherine, it happens over a period of time. Before you know it, they own you, mind, body, and soul. Anything you were is gone. They control it. It can happen in any home, anywhere, at any time, and it has very, very long-lasting repercussions. She's very close to me in age, and she's never gotten over it. She cries about it from time to time, but she has, she has learned, she has learned to put one foot in front of the other through organizations like we have here in Calvert County. And I thank all of you for what you do, because this is a problem. In many ways, I think it's a silent problem for years. So again, thank you for all that you do. Okay, I'm going to read the proclamation. Okay, whereas domestic violence is a pattern of behavior that one person uses to gain power and control over another. It is a public health issue that affects all of us in ways both seen and unseen. To address it, we must apply our collective attention and resources to help end the cycles of violence that feed into the myriad of other health issues affecting our neighbors such as homelessness, mental and behavioral health, and substance use disorder. And whereas the Center for Disease Control and Prevention reports domestic violence prevention strategies should focus on teaching safe and healthy relationship skills, engaging influential adults and peers, disrupting the developmental pathway toward violence, creating protective environments, strengthening economic support for families, and supporting survivors to increase safety and lessen harms. And whereas the Commission for Women and Center for Change work to end domestic violence in Calvert County through education, awareness, community support, and collaboration among individuals, community groups, law enforcement, and other governmental agencies. They are sponsoring a Domestic Violence Awareness Month presentation in partnership with Safe Harbor, the Calvert County State's Attorney's Office, the Calvert County Sheriff's Office, and the Calvert County Courts on October 3rd, 2023. They are also organizing a supply drive on October 28th, 2023, to address the needs of women and children at Safe Harbor, Calvert County's domestic violence shelter. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that October 2023 be known as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Calvert County. Be it further proclaimed that we urge all citizens to actively support efforts to end domestic violence and prevent harm to all who live within our communities, given under our hands and seal this day, this third day of October 2023, signed by all five Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
So our next proclamation is for the Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference Competitions. Commissioner Irland.
Carrie Atkins, would you mind coming up and introducing yourself and who you have with you?
Good morning. I am Carrie Atkins. I'm the very proud principal at the Career and Technology Academy. Would you like me to say my words and then-
Absolutely.
All right. So today we're here to gather to celebrate a very exceptional group of young individuals who have not only showcased their remarkable skills, but who have also embodied the spirit of dedication, hard work, and excellence. These outstanding individuals are our CTA Skills USA National Competitors 2023, and they have brought great pride and honor to our community through their demonstration of skills at the Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference that was held in June in Atlanta, Georgia. Overall, the Career and Technology Academy sent 16 student competitors to this event, more than any other high school in the state of Maryland. Skills USA is a national career and technical student organization with over 400,000 career and technical education student and teacher members. At CTA, we strive to achieve Skills USA's mission to empower students to become skilled professionals, career-ready leaders, and responsible community members. Through Skills USA, CTA students develop the transformative career readiness skills, teamwork, communication, professionalism, leadership, and more that fuel career and life success. In a world where talent and proficiency are highly valued, Skills USA has been a platform for our students to shine brightly. These competitors face rigorous challenges and intense competition, standing shoulder to shoulder with the best in the nation. Their unwavering commitment to their crafts, their relentless pursuit of perfection, and their ability to adapt and innovate have made them true champions in their respective fields. As we gather today, we are not just recognizing their accomplishments, we are acknowledging the countless hours of training, the sacrifices made, and the sheer determination that have brought them to this moment. These young men and women are not just competitors, they are the future leaders and innovators of our community and of our nation. I am proud to count them as alumni and future alumni of CTA, and I know that we're all honored to have them as representatives of Calvert County. I thank you Commissioners for honoring these outstanding young individuals who are the pride of our community and promise of a brighter future. So today we have several of our competitors here with us. Several others couldn't make it because they're off at college or hard at work in their careers. But today we have several of them with us, so I will have them come on up as I call them. So first we have Will Walton, who placed fifth in the nation for HVAC.
You've got a cell number, I may need you down the story every once in a while.
$40 an hour.
Oh, that's all? Oh, that's all? Yeah, I need that number now.
We have with us, we have Thomas Marshall, who competed in automotive maintenance and light repair and finished ninth in the nation. We have with us Maxwell Brexler, who competed in power equipment technology. We have a team of students who competed in community service, who prepared a project on the dangers of opioids and the use of Narcan, and they are Jessica Cecil, Nathan Holly, and Jaden Johnson. And we have with us, we have with us three of the four members of our Teamworks Construction Team, which is a group of four trades craftspeople who, over the course of these three days, build and construct an entire room of a house with a masonry feature, electricity, plumbing, all of that. And so they are Logan Kinner, Tyler Smith, and Andrew Rotten, and they finished 12th in the nation.
So our next proclamation is for the Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference Competitions, Commissioner Harland.
Carrie Atkins, would you mind coming up and introducing yourself and who you got with you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Carrie Atkins. I'm the very proud principal of the Career and Technology Academy. Would you like me to say my words and then bring you up?
Absolutely.
All right. So today we're here to gather to celebrate a very exceptional group of young individuals who have not only showcased their remarkable skills, but have, who have also embodied the spirit of dedication, hard work, and excellence. These outstanding individuals are our CTA Skills USA National Competitors 2023, and they have brought great pride and honor to our community through their demonstration of skills at the Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference that was held in June in Atlanta, Georgia. Overall, the Career and Technology Academy sent sixteen student competitors to this event, more than any other high school in the state of Maryland. Skills USA is a national career and technical student organization with over four hundred thousand career and technical education student and teacher members. At CTA, we strive to achieve Skills USA's mission to empower students to become skilled professionals, career-ready leaders, and responsible community members. Through Skills USA, CTA students develop the transformative career readiness skills, teamwork, communication, professionalism, leadership, and more that fuel career and life success. In a world where talent and proficiency are highly valued, Skills USA has been a platform for our students to shine brightly. These competitors face rigorous challenges and intense competition, standing shoulder to shoulder with the best in the nation. Their unwavering commitment to their crafts, their relentless pursuit of perfection, and their ability to adapt and innovate have made them true champions in their respective fields. As we gather today, we are not just recognizing their accomplishments, we are acknowledging the countless hours of training, the sacrifices made, and the sheer determination that have brought them to this moment. These young men and women are not just competitors, they are the future leaders and innovators of our community and of our nation. I am proud to count them as alumni and future alumni of CTA, and I know that we're all honored to have them as representatives of Calvert County. I thank you Commissioners for honoring these outstanding young individuals who are the pride of our community and promise of a brighter future. So today we have several of our competitors here with us. Several others couldn't make it because they're off at college or hard at work in their careers. But today we have several of them with us, so I will have them come on up as I call them. So first we have Will Walton, who placed fifth in the nation for HVAC.
That's awesome. That's great.
You've got a cell number. I may need you down the store every once in a while.
Forty dollars an hour. He's got, no.
Oh, that's all? Oh, that's all? Yeah, what's, I need that number now.
We have with us, we have Thomas Marshall, who competed in automotive maintenance and light repair and finished ninth in the nation. We have with us Maxwell Brexler, who competed in power equipment technology. We have a team of students who competed in compute, community service, who prepared a project on the dangers of opioids and the use of Narcan, and they are Jessica Cecil, Nathan Holly, and Jaden Johnson. And we have with us, we have with us three of the four members of our Teamworks Construction Team, which is a group of four trades craftspeople who, over the course of these three days, build and construct an entire room of a house with a masonry feature, electricity, plumbing, all of that. And so they are Logan Kinner, Tyler Smith, and Andrew Rotten, and they finished twelfth in the nation. And as the students finish coming forward, I do want to recognize too, we have several of their teachers that are here with us today, which none of this is possible without them and their hard work and their dedication to the students and our school. So we have with us our automotive teachers, Ray Trigger and Ben Lane. We have, come on up gentlemen.
Come on up guys.
Come on up. We have our carpentry and home improvement teacher, Mr. Warren Harvey. We have our HVAC teacher, Mr. Garrison. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that everybody, you also have a vice president?
We also have our assistant principal, Mr. Mister. We have our, our Skills USA lead advisor, Ms. Clements, with us today, so.
So thank you and congratulations to each and every one of you. Nineteen eighty-eight, I was president of VICA then, which was Vocational Industrial Clubs of America, which had changed over to Skills USA. What year was that? Anybody have an idea?
Twenty-ten, I think.
Twenty-ten, is that what it was?
I think so.
Okay. So congratulations. I only made it to the county level, and I got recognized there for something, never made it state, much less national, so congratulations to each and every one of you and the staff. You guys are very important. Ms. Atkins, you have an electrical teacher yet?
We, we are, we have a long-term staff we're working on.
Good. Great. That's good to hear. All right, without further ado, I'm gonna read the proclamation. Whereas Skills USA is an important national student-like career and technical student organization of over four hundred thousand students that encourages and supports strong partnerships between education and industry, and is an essential co-curricular component to the career and technology education programs available to all students at Calvert County Public Schools. And whereas the students of the Career and Technology Academy have affirmed their commitment to career readiness by participating in Skills USA activities that support the Skills USA framework, supporting students' individual development of the personal, workplace, and technical skills grounded in academics that will prepare them for success in the future. And whereas the Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference was held June nineteenth through twenty-third in Atlanta, Georgia, the students of Calvert County Public School CTA join students from across the country in demonstrating exceptional occupational leadership skills, representing the best in the nation. They have consistently shown their dedication, commitment, and passion for excellence in various fields. Given under our hands and seal this third day of October 2023, signed by all five county commissioners.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And last but not least, proclamation for National 4H Week.
So I saw some representatives from 4H. If you would please come up to the microphone and introduce yourselves and what you do for 4H in our county.
Absolutely. Good morning Commissioners. My name is Kirsten Cowan. I'm the 4H educator here in Calvert County, and it seemed quite appropriate that National 4H Week kicked off this past Sunday with our last day of Calvert County Fair. At Fair, our 4H youth had the opportunity to highlight the hard work and dedication they've put in this past year, from entering their club scrapbooks, educational posters, and fun creative arts into the youth building, and showing their hogs, goats, sheep, and steers in the livestock ring. The ribbons and awards are always fun and fun to show off. However, it's watching the youth help one another, educate the public, and contribute positively to the community that makes me the proudest. Shiny examples of this was this year's 4H hospice hog raised by Luka Said, sold nine different times, raising over twenty-seven thousand dollars for Hospice of the Chesapeake. Additionally, we're joined today by Lily Cox, a 4H member, who earned the coveted Herdsman Award for all her hard work around the barn, helping others and helping her community. Now, anyone who knows me knows that Fair is my favorite week of the whole year. However, we also know that 4H is far more than just our fair. Our Calvert County 4H program continues to grow each year, not only in size, but in interests of the youth. I am so proud to be part of the program that helps youth find their own spark, from those that have livestock projects to bicycle safety, shooting sports to cooking, woodworking to canning, robotics to photography, and just about everything in between. All while the kids learn these important life skills and grow into positive contributing members of their society. This National 4H Week, I encourage everyone to learn a bit more about what 4H has to offer in your local community. And lastly, if you know someone who's a 4H volunteer, please thank them. They are the backbone of our program, and we quite literally could not do this without them. And I'd love my representatives to come on up, introduce yourselves, adults and youth. Come on, guys. Ms. Ellen?
You can come up too, Dad.
Mr. Danny? Come on. So give your name and your club.
I'm Lily Cox, and I'm in Battle Creek 4H Club.
And what did you raise this year, Ms. Lily?
Hogs.
How many?
Three.
And did you sell them?
I sold two at the Calvert County Fair.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ellen DiOrio. I'm the shooting sports nationally certified shooting sports instructor for our shooting sports club. I've been a shooting sports instructor in New Jersey and moved to Maryland about thirty years, and I enjoy working with the youth in all sorts of activities.
And how would someone get involved in a shooting club for 4H?
Well, first of all, we need adults who want to help children to learn how to be safe in shooting bows and air rifles. We, we really need adults because we have usually about thirty young people who want to be in this club, and we only have six guns and six bows. So we'll need, we'll need a lot of adults to help out. How they can get in touch, how an adult or youth can get in touch with 4H is Calvert County 4H, 4H Clubs, I guess. There's Facebook, there's county website, and also the University of Maryland Extension, the State University of Maryland Extension. If you go on that website, they'll direct you to Calvert County.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners. Daniel Cox, host, not expecting to stand up and talk this morning. Father of Lily and I guess new volunteer of Battle Creek 4H. So learned a lot for our second year and looking forward to many more.
Good. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. I'm Vanessa DeVries. I'm one of the club leaders for the Calvert Heritage 4H Club. Our mission with Calvert Heritage is twofold. One, we are trying to preserve and teach the youth the history of Calvert County. Last year, our big claim to fame was we grew a tobacco field, and the children did every part of the tobacco process, from planting it, to topping it, to stripping it, cutting it, and hanging it in the barns, and then showing it at the fair. Our second mission with our club is that we are trying to teach our children to learn fundamentals in life. They've done hunter safety, they've done boater safety classes, CPR, so we're just all around trying to make them good humans. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners. I'm Kevin DeVries, the other half. Heritage 4H Club as well. We're here really representing our daughters who are obviously still in school today, but the club is a great thing for all the youth, and as my wife was saying, it's more than just growing hogs, growing produce, it's, it's all about the community. They do some community stuff as well by going down to Calvert Pines on, what is that, Valentine's Day and, and putting cards on every one of the doors for the, for the elderly. So the club is, is well-rounded, and I'm glad to be a part of it.
Thank you. I'm actually part of the Heritage 4H Club as well with my children. Unfortunately, they aged out. The DeVrezes are wonderful people, and they've taken over. They have two young girls coming up through it, and everybody here, congratulations to you. Congratulations on that award. I know you really helped out in the barn to get that, so that's for you. Without further ado, I'm gonna read the proclamation. Whereas 4H is America's largest youth development organization, having supported almost six million youth across the country thus far. In Calvert County, 4H has developed or has helped thousands of youth to become confident, independent, resilient, and compassionate leaders. And whereas 4H is delivered by cooperative extension, a community of more than one hundred public universities across the nation that provide experience where young people can learn by doing through hands-on projects in the important areas of health, science, and agriculture, and civic management engagement. Maryland 4H is delivered by the University of Maryland Extension, the research and outreach arm of the University of Maryland's College of Agriculture and Natural Resources. And whereas National 4H Week showcases the incredible experiences the 4H offers young people and highlights the remarkable 4H youth in Calvert County who work each day to positively impact those around them. 4H's network of six hundred thousand volunteers and thirty-five hundred professionals provides caring and supportive mentoring to all 4Hers, helping them to grow into true leaders, entrepreneurs, and visionaries. Every hour of guidance and every dollar invested in 4H youth development programs enables youth to reach their full potential in a diverse society, developing life skills for all seasons of life. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the week of October first through seventh, 2023, be known as National 4H Week. We urge all residents to recognize and support the needs of 4H youth in our community, not just this week, but every week. Be it further proclaimed that by this action, the Board of County Commissioners commends all Calvert County 4H members, volunteers, and staff for providing leadership, commitment, and opportunities to build a bright, healthy future for all citizens in Calvert County and beyond, given our under hands and seal this third day of October 2023, signed by all five county commissioners. Only thing I want to say is the, the livestock auction is always held the Saturday night of the fair. It starts at 6:00 PM, and it's truly entertainment. These kids work all year, the ones that have livestock projects to feed that livestock project out, to get it to a market weight, to be able to show it, be able to get that animal to somewhat listen to them, and, and walk with them around a showroom. So if you've never been, it's a great opportunity. We look forward to seeing you there next year's auction at 6:00 PM.
So Commissioner Hart left, but just for the record, all the Commissioners participated in the livestock auction except for Commissioner Hart. That's why he snuck out the back door. Commissioner Grasso and I purchased Lily's hog at the fair, so we're looking forward to that. And I tell, I tell parents of all young children that I interact with that you should get your children involved in either Scouts or 4H. There are two organizations that will help mold your child into be a great adult in the future. So 4H and scouting is always the two things I encourage people to get engaged in. And I want to thank all the volunteer 4H leaders, because as was mentioned, you can't have the organization without volunteers. So we greatly appreciate the time and effort of all the adults that give, so thank you very much for that. So that completes proclamations for today and brings us to a public hearing, Department of Public Safety. Mr. Garrison?
Hello.
Commissioners, good morning. Mike Garrison, Emergency Management Division Chief.
Kara Buckmaster, Emergency Management Specialist.
There is a public hearing scheduled today to consider and receive public comment regarding two budget adjustments for FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Projects. The county has adopted guidelines for conduct at public hearings as detailed in Resolution six dash eighty-nine. This hearing will be executed to comply with that resolution. The hearing has been duly advertised, and there is a certification of publication that has been made part of the record for the hearing. Citizens are invited to provide public comment after the presentation has concluded. Anyone in person wishing to speak must use the sign-in sheet next to the attorney. Listeners on the phone must stay on the line until the end of the presentation and press star nine if they wish to speak. Background. The Division of Emergency Management, working with and for the Calvert County residents, has applied for two federal emergency management agency hazard mitigation grants, grants to acquire and demolish multiple at-risk properties in the county. The first, four-five-eight-three-dash-zero-two, is for the acquisition and demolition of three homes that are in imminent danger due to cliff erosion. The second, four-four-nine-one-dash-one-one, is for the acquisition and demolition of one repetitive flood-loss property. The Maryland Department of Emergency Management is the recipient of the awards, and Calvert County is the sub-recipient. As part of the agreement, the county will act as a pass-through for the FEMA funds to acquire and demolish the properties. Discussion. The costs of the projects are borne by FEMA at ninety percent of the approved budget and ten percent by the homeowners. Project four-five-eight-three-dash-zero-two was funded for one million six hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars, with a maximum federal share of one million four hundred fifty-seven thousand eight hundred thirty-one dollars seventy cents. Project four-four-nine-one-dash-one-one was funded for three hundred eighteen thousand four hundred forty-seven thousand fifty cents, with a maximum federal share of two hundred eighty-six thousand six hundred two dollars seventy-five cents. Local jurisdictions must forward fund the projects and then submit requests for reimbursement as expenses are incurred. To receive reimbursement, the county must enter into a memorandum of agreement with the state of Maryland for each project. The MOAs acknowledge the conditions and requirements of the grants, including the period of performance, the amount of the awards, and the established regulations that will be followed. Fiscal impact. In addition to the award total above, the grants provide eighty thousand nine hundred ninety dollars sixty-five cents and fifteen thousand nine hundred twenty-two thousand thirty-seven cents, respectively, in sub-recipient management costs, which are hundred percent federally funded and serve as reimbursement to the county to offset the incurred costs associated with staff time. There is no physical fiscal impact to the county. Conclusion and recommendation. It is recommended that the Board of County Commissioners close the record and approve and adopt the resolution enacting budget adjustment BA two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-zero-zero-one-zero-two for one million four hundred fifty-seven thousand eight hundred, eight hundred thirty-one dollars and seventy cents, and budget adjustment two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-zero-zero-one-one-two for two hundred eighty-six thousand six hundred two dollars seventy-five cents. It is also recommended that the President of the Board of County Commissioners sign the attached memorandums of agreement to move forward with the acquisition and demolition of the three cliff houses and the repetitive flood-loss property. So at this time, I will hand this over to the county attorney, Mr. Norris, to So at this time, I will hand this over to the county attorney, Mr. Norris, to check and see if anyone has requested to speak.
There are no speakers.
Questions or discussion, motion?
How many houses are left on that cliff that's still in this program?
There are over...I don't want to give you an incorrect number, but I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, the original study identified over 200 along the cliffs. Not all of them were high-risk, but there are still...
Like the ones off of NCRE there, they were really where the road was closed, Golden West Way?
Yeah, there are still several houses that, as the erosion continues, will become higher risk and eventually need assistance. But I can give you a precise number if you'd like later on.
Later, please.
There are several by the beach, too.
Yes.
Need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I move that we close the record and approve and adopt the resolution enacting budget adjustments BA 2024-102 and BA 2024-112 and authorize the President to sign the attached memorandums of agreement and acquisition and settlement documents for the acquisition and demolition of the three cliff houses and the repetitive flood-loss properties.
Second. Have motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is a consent item. We only have two items under consent today. Item one, Department of Public Works Budget Amendment for the Northeast Community Center Gym Floor Replacement. Item two, Office of the County Attorney Funding the Open Space Revolving Loan. Are there any objections to the two items listed under consent today?
None.
None.
Hearing none. Those items will be adopted as presented. That brings us to new business. Item one, Department of Community Resources Public Transportation Fiscal Year 2024 Ride Share Grant Agreement. Director Moreland.
Jennifer Moreland, Director of Community Resources. This is Fiscal Year 2024 Ride Share Grant Agreement, and this is an annual grant. Background, on March 14th, 2023, the Board of County Commissioners approved the Calvert County Public Transportation's Fiscal Year FY 2024 Ride Share Grant Application to the Maryland Department of Transportation, Maryland Transit Administration, M.MTA. This annual grant application is to secure federal funding for the continued operations of the county's public transportation system. The Ride Share Grant Funding...discussion. The Ride Share Grant Funding, as part of this agreement, totals $8,730 and supports the county's commuter assistance program, a function of public transportation. Fiscal impact. Federal funds have all been previously approved in the Fiscal Year 2024 General Fund Budget. No local matching funds are required. Conclusion and recommendation. The Department of Community Resources Public Transportation Division recommends that the Board of County Commissioners review and appropriate authorize the Board President to sign the attached Fiscal Year 2024 Ride Share Grant Agreement. Any questions?
Questions, discussion, motion?
Mr. President, I move that we approve and authorize the Board President to sign the attached FY 2024 Ride Share Grant Agreement.
Second. Have motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Director Moreland. Item two, Department of Planning and Zoning Community Rating System Annual Recertification. Mr. Moreney.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I'll do a run-through on the memo. For the background, as part of the ongoing efforts to participate in the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Community Rating System, the Department of Planning and Zoning is completing the county's annual recertification. FEMA approved the county's participation in the CRS program in January of 2015 with an effective date of May 1st, 2015. Property owners located within the 100-year floodplain receive a 10% discount on their flood insurance premiums annually under the county's participation in this program. Discussion. As part of the annual recertification process, planning and zoning must certify that it is continuing to participate in the CRS program in the same or higher capacity as presented to FEMA at the time of the CRS program application by completing the attached CC213 form and the accompanying documentation. In addition, as part of the recertification process, planning and zoning is providing the annual progress report to the Calvert County Flood Mitigation Plan. Fiscal impact. The fiscal impact for participating in the CRS program includes the annual mailings associated with the required outreach to property owners located within the floodplain and professionals in the real estate and banking industries. Information provided in the mailings includes how to identify if a property is in the 100-year floodplain, mandatory flood insurance requirements, flood preparedness measures, financial assistance, et cetera. The costs and salaries for staff time required to prepare the recertification are currently covered by the Department of Planning and Zoning. Conclusion and recommendation. The Department of Planning and Zoning requests the Board of County Commissioners review and, if deemed appropriate, approve the annual report and authorize the Board President to sign the form CC213 for the annual recertification.
So, Mr. Moreney, you want to just briefly tell everyone what this program does?
Absolutely. So, the National Flood Insurance Program provides insurance for those that are deemed to be at flood risk. So you have the mapped and regulated floodplain. If you have a mortgage and you are in the floodplain, you are required by federal law to have insurance. So what our office does is we participate in this program called the CRS and that gives you a discount. A fun thing that's not in the memo that happened in April of this year, this discount is now extended to all county residents, not just those who are located in the floodplain. So anyone that has or wants insurance, they will receive this discount.
So maybe we can get COR to push that information out that anyone that wants to obtain flood insurance can get a discount through this program?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, discussion, motion?
I have a motion. I move that we approve the annual report and authorize the Board President to sign the form CC213 for recertification.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Moreney.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three, under new business, Office of the County Court, excuse me, Office of the Court Administrator, Family Magistrate Fiscal Year 2024 Child Support Agreement and Budget Adjustment. Morning, Mr. Wood.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Burgess Wood, Court Administrator for the Circuit Court for Calvert County. I'm coming before you in reference to the Family Magistrates Fiscal Year 2024 Child Support Agreement and Budget Adjustment. Background. The magistrate's office receives a grant for child support services, also known as Title 4D cases, through the Maryland Child Support Administration. The child support grant and the Calvert County government budget combine to provide funding for payroll and expenses. Payroll, which includes two full-time employees, is split 60% to the grant and 40% to the Calvert County government, and expenses are split 66% to the grant and 34% to the Calvert County government. The fiscal year for this grant runs from October to September. Staff recently conducted a self-audit of the grant and determined that the time spent on child support cases as defined by the grant scope of work has declined. Discussion. Based on discussion with the state's grant coordinator, the self-audit results warranted a change in the funding split between the grant and the Calvert County government to better reflect the services being provided. Payroll and expenses will now be split 20% to the grant and 80% to Calvert County government. Additionally, this will increase the FTE funding towards FTEs by .8. So there's two FTEs, .4 apiece. So that's total .8. Fiscal impact. There is a fiscal impact to the county. For FY 2024, the budget increase will be $82,952 for the remaining three-quarters. For FY 25, their increase will be $118,464. Conclusion and recommendations. The Circuit Court for Calvert County recommends the Board of County Commissioners review and, if appropriate, authorize the Board President to sign the Cooperative Reimbursement Agreement and Lease Document. Additionally, approve the full-time employee change and the budget amendment, the Budget Adjustment Number 2024-000159. Yeah, is there any questions?
Mr. Wood, you want to explain what these child support services are that you provide?
So it's just basically, over time, we started to look into it because about a year ago, the administrative office of the court started to review cases also, and it reflected on the magistrate's percentage of pay. It was reduced. Then it started us looking into the amount of time we spent specifically on child support cases. And what we're finding out and it...we feel it's a reflection of two parents working. So, child support isn't really, you know, as important as custody. And in some of the cases that are coming up with child support, State's Attorney's Office of Tammy Lafferty, they're very efficient in trying to negotiate this prior to coming to court. So when you come into court, you're not having a full-blown hearing. You're pretty much just putting the amounts on the record.
Very good. Questions, discussion, motion?
I have a motion, Mr. President. I move that we approve the full-time employee change and budget adjustment BA 2024-159 and authorize the President to sign the Cooperative Reimbursement Agreement and Lease.
Second.
Have motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Yes, sir. You, too. That brings us to a presentation by the Department of Community Resources Domestic Violent Prevention Awareness. Director Moreland, good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. So, thank you for having me here today, along with Calvert County State's Attorney's Office, Calvert Center for Change, the Safe Harbor Shelter staff, and Calvert County Sheriff's Office staff. Unfortunately, Commission for Women...oh, and we also have a member of the Calvert Commission for Women here as well. Unfortunately, I mentioned earlier, Catherine Marsh could not be here today, but she very much was a part of developing this presentation and the planning. So I want to start by saying, we're doing this presentation this year in lieu of our silent vigil. So for years, we've done a silent vigil, but we don't really see a lot of attendance with that event, and we want to get our focus to be getting resources to people that need them. So that's really our purpose this month with the presentation. This is going to be converted to a video that'll go on our website that will be evergreen. So our purpose is to share resources that will help victims and survivors of domestic violence. And I just want to share some statistics that really give...blend the gravity of this particular issue. Nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States. That's 10 million annually. Victims of intimate partner violence lose a total of 8 million days of paid work each year. And on average, intimate partner violence costs exceed 8.3 billion per year. These are, of course, national statistics, but they really...the gravity of this issue really...it really tells you that it's vital to have a very comprehensive and well-coordinated response. And so now I'm going to share some of the statistics locally. So these are statistics that come from the Calvert County Sheriff's Office as well as the District Court. And I did this presentation two years ago, for those of you that were on the board at that time, and you might remember the data at that point. And of course, I think that was right when the pandemic had started. So now we have data up to 2022. So we can see that we are starting to see an increase in calls and cases, you know, in the past two years. Of course, this doesn't reflect 2023 data. You know, data's a tricky thing because you want people to call. So sometimes those numbers mean that they're being proactive. What we are very concerned about during the pandemic is that they weren't, that people felt they didn't have any options to leave their spouse or their intimate partner. So, and then this is a slide that shows peace order cases, and it shows them by county. So you can kind of see how...what our numbers are like compared to our surrounding counties. You can see that there was a big jump in Fiscal Year 21 for peace order cases.
So do you have any reason why you think that happened?
You mean compared to the other? I mean, it looks like there were jumps in all three counties, and I think that that was during the pandemic and there were a lot of difficult interpersonal situations during the pandemic.
Too much togetherness.
Peace orders are actually non-intimate partner.
Right, not in the marriage.
So that could be your neighbor. You had to look at your neighbor all day, every day.
Yeah, yep.
Nobody signed up for that. Don't like my neighbors that much.
Yeah, that's true. The data tells a story, right? And so for this particular thing, I mean, some cases may have been intimate partner-related, but not all. And then these are domestic violence cases filed in the District Court. So for this, you see Calvert really kind of evened out compared to our other, you know, compared to the past five years. However, this was Fiscal Year 21, so we don't have more up-to-date data on this.
Jen, are those repeat offenders, I mean, being the number is relatively consistent?
Not necessarily. And I really couldn't speak to that. When the state's attorney, when they come up and talk, maybe you can ask some of those more specific questions related to the court, but...and what they see anecdotally.
Good. I mean, you know, you look at it and goes, there are 374 brand-new cases and then four...you know what I mean?
I'm sure there are repeat cases, but that's a good idea for a breakdown.
A lot of times, it's what you seem to find. It's repeat offenders and unfortunately...
The cycle of violence continues and many times in families. And that's what we're concerned about. And that's why so many partners are trying to address this, because that cycle of violence perpetuates so many other issues in the community. When you look at worst childhood experiences, I know you've heard of that, domestic violence is considered, obviously, one of those experiences, but it can lead to substance abuse, mental health issues, all sorts of health issues for those children and that continue to cause issues for the community down the road. In terms of fatalities, our numbers are low. And I reached out in regards to if we've seen any fatalities this year, and we have not. So that's good. So now, just briefly, want to go over what victim needs, what that looks like for a victim. First and foremost, they need to know the resources that are out there. So access to information on their rights, options, resources, and how to develop a safety plan because it takes people several times. I think the average is seven encounters till they make that choice to leave. And so having a plan in place is really important. In terms of resources for self-sufficiency and preventing the cycle of violence, skill development, so job training and GED, and then parenting classes. So critical. Community Mediation Center in Calvert County offers parenting classes. It's called Triple P Parenting, and it's underutilized, but it's a great resource. It's an evidence-based practice. So I encourage people to take advantage of that. And encouragement...and then they need supportive resources. So encouragement and empathy and counseling and self-care resources because obviously there's a lot of...Commissioner Grasso mentioned the kind of damage that this does over a period of time. It takes a while to get to a point where you can move forward and with confidence. And then victim needs, continued with access to opportunities. So childcare, financial assistance, healthcare, and family planning, and housing, these are all really critical for a victim to leave their abuser. So being able to have those resources specifically for victims of domestic violence is really critical. And then social supports and community systems change. So establishing a system of response where there aren't any gaps. You don't want people to fall through the cracks. And so all of us coming together as partners is trying to prevent that from happening. And then addressing the stigma that is among your friends, neighbors, family members about speaking up when they see something, calling 911 when it's appropriate, calling the sheriff's office when it's appropriate, reaching out to a crisis line, taking action. It's really Now I'm going to introduce Melissa Colazo and Sarah Dishner from the Center for Change, and they're going to talk a little bit about the programs available through the Calvert County Health Department Center for Change.
So Jennifer, I do have a question real quick.
Yes.
Is any data out there for age groups?
Specific to which groups are impacted?
Yes.
There's probably national statistics, but I don't know that we have that available locally.
We have for the state of Maryland, there was 50 space fatalities in 2022. And they break them down by age, race, gender. There's a great portfolio.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Sarah Dishner and I'm the clinical supervisor for Calvert Center for Change. Our agency provides services for victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. We are located at the Calvert Health Department. We provide services at our lesbian office as well as our Prince Frederick location. Our office also provides 24/7 crisis hotline through Calvert Crisis Response. And the phone number for that is 1-877-467-5628. We also provide therapy for children, adolescents and adults. We also provide crisis planning, which kind of goes along with what Jennifer said. You know, like safety planning is a very important thing. Because it takes so long for some women to leave, she is correct, that it takes about approximately seven times for a victim to leave an abuser. So, you know, even if victims stay in that abusive relationship, we do have a crisis advocate that meets with victims to do that crisis planning, you know, and try to walk them through the cycle of abuse and help them make that decision to leave. We also provide accompaniment to the hospital and also accompaniment for protective orders if victims feel like they need additional support. We provide advocacy in legal matters and referral to the Safe Harbor Shelter.
Do you have any questions for the Health Department or the Center for Change staff?
So how many, how many clients do you have usually in a year?
So I haven't looked at the most recent client count. I know that we're getting ready to look at our performance measures and everything. So I don't have an accurate depiction of that currently.
Do you want to talk about the abuser intervention?
Good morning. My name is Melissa and I work with the Calvert Center for Change and I actually work on the opposite side. So while we know providing services to victims and survivors of intimate partner violence is very crucial, we also know to make, to address effectively intimate partner violence and to make real changes, we also have to provide services to those that are using the abusive and intimate or abusive and violent behaviors in their intimate relationships. So at Calvert Center for Change, we have a state certified program through the governor's office, which is called the Abuse Intervention Program. The goal of this program is to increase the safety of our survivors in our community. We also try to hold the offending individuals accountable and promote positive change towards nonviolent behaviors, which promotes healthy relationships. So like I mentioned, we're a state certified program through the governor's office. We provide highly structured curriculum and content and weekly group sessions. And the requirement is that they have to attend for a minimum of 24 weeks, which is a six month long program. The curriculum and weekly content target the abusive and unhealthy behaviors by exploring the root causes of intimate partner violence as well as addressing their own belief system about it. The program provides education and support to our clients while also working towards positive changes. But we also have to recognize what their contribution is. So we look at their individual individual belief systems as well as the use of violence, power, control and abusive behaviors. Because of the use of coercive control tactics like violence and and the many different forms, we believe that anger management is not a substitute for abuse intervention programming. So where do we receive our referrals? Our participants are primarily ordered through the court system, so District Court and Circuit Court. We also receive services referrals through Department of Probation and Parole, Department of Social Services, the state's attorney's office, as well as we receive self referrals. So if somebody's identifying some abusive behaviors or unhealthy behaviors in their relationships or perhaps their partners suggesting that they receive help, we are an option for them as well. Clients are addressed throughout the program and are provided with support and resources to address any barriers so we can help meet their needs and help them to be successful in our program. Due to grant funding, our for our second year, we're happy to announce that we've been able to address the financial barrier that many clients receive when participating in our six month program. As of right now, clients do not have to pay any fees while participating, which is a huge relief for most of them. Another aspect of our abuse intervention program is that participants are required to provide written consent for us to be able to contact their victims in the cases. Again, this is another component of victim safety because the victim advocate is able to reach out to any victim and children that are involved in these cases, providing them resources and referrals through our Calvert Center for Change or any resources that may benefit them in the community. In the fiscal year of 2023, the Abuse Intervention Program provided services to 47 clients and had 24 clients complete that year. As of fiscal year 2024, we've had 14 new referrals already, 10 clients to enroll into our program. We have 14 that are actively participating and engaging in group sessions and we've had five completions this year so far. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senator, I'm assuming that it's not just physical abuse.
No, absolutely not. And that's one of the things in our structured content and curriculum that we address because a lot of times there is, again, stigma that's attached or there's misinformation. A lot of times clients come in and think that it's only physical abuse. So we do highly address the different forms of abuse. We know stalking is very prevalent in intimate partner violent relationships as well as psychological abuse.
I just want to make sure that people out there understand that you just don't have to be physically.
No.
There are.
Correct.
Is it only intimate relationships you deal with or do you deal with bullying and that type of thing too?
So with the Abuse Intervention Program, it is only structured for intimate partner violence.
Okay.
The psychological abuse is debilitating. It is, your your wounds can heal, but what happens to your psyche lasts a lifetime for most victims.
Correct. And prior to working here, I did work with a victim advocacy service in another state and often that was the most long lasting effect because the scars would go away or would heal, but the psychological abuse was long lasting.
One other thing I would like to say, so for the week of October 16th through the 22nd, it is Light Up Calvert Purple Week in Support of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. In each of your bags, I did include a little purple light bulb if you would like to participate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the Health Department is participating as well. They'll be lighting up purple and so will our Calvert County Courthouse.
Sheriff's Office is going to have lit.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So now I'd like to bring up Sharon Maggio with Calvert County Sheriff's Office. Sharon has been such an active member of our community in in supporting this particular issue. And what I asked Sharon to provide was kind of an account of if you are a victim, what should you do? What are the steps you should take? And so she's going to run through kind of that whole process for a victim.
So basically, you know, you always hear call 911. Of course, that's that's what you first would do. If you're in immediate danger, you've been threatened, you've been assaulted. And if you're unable to call immediately, call as soon as you can. There will be a call taker depending on whether it goes to 911 or if someone calls our non emergency number, it would go to a communications officer, the call. And they'll ask questions about location, description and other details related to the incident. After that, a deputy will be dispatched to the location to interview parties and witnesses, collect evidence, complete lethality assessment, which includes strangulation, which is an actually very high risk indicator of domestic violence and high risk for lethality. Even though it surprisingly, it's not a high method of death, but it's a high if someone uses that tactic, they usually don't use strangulation to kill them. They use it as a tactic to let them know they can kill them anytime they want. And again, the whole power control dynamic. The mobile crisis team and ambulance may be called to the location depending on the circumstances and the severity of injury. Immediate needs will be assessed, referrals can will be provided, including how to file a protective order if they feel that is a good option for them. For some people, they choose not to for several reasons. But they can call the sheriff's office if they're not ready to talk to or file something. Go talk to someone else. They they can talk to someone just to share. Like they may not want to press charges yet. They may not want to do a file a protective order, but they may just want to have someone to to listen to them, hear what's going on and share all the resources in the county, like everyone here in this room. And we encourage anyone to call us. We we want to be there and help them figure out what's best for them, meet them where they are and and help with that. I did take some notes while and I'd like to just maybe help clarify a few things. My notes are jumbled now, so I do apologize if they're not in great order. So during COVID, there was definitely a spike in peace orders in Calvert County. And I think that from reading the allegations was people were at heightened levels of fear, agitation, anger, being, you know, being afraid, just people were not as friendly with their neighbors or who they ran into and out in the community. As far as protective orders, there wasn't a huge spike in protective orders in Calvert County. However, in the state's attorney's office, we talked about this too. There was a spike in the severity of the allegations. There was more strangulation. There was more of the physical abuse and severe. So that was definitely noted. Let's see. Maryland, so every day, the National Network to End Domestic Violence, excuse me, every year in September, they designate one day. They contact all victim service providers in the country, including Maryland. And last year, there was, all of the victim service providers did participate and they asked them, how many individuals contacted you and did you serve? So in Maryland, last September, over 1,000 individuals on this one day contacted a victim service provider for assistance and over 300 had unmet needs. And one of the biggest or two of the biggest unmet needs were related to housing and funding. At to date in Calvert County, we have combined protective and peace orders over 600 for this year since January. And we have over 1,400 hearings that have been held in District and Circuit Court.
What's the breakdown between the two?
I don't have that.
Fifty fifty usually or?
Oh, no, there's far less in Circuit Court. And the reason being, the justification would be District Court, you can file after hours. So you're going to see a larger volume from with District Court versus Circuit, just because of the accessibility. And let's see.
What about between protective orders and peace orders?
With where they're filed.
What do you figure about 50 50, half and half or a third, two thirds roughly?
Where they're filed or just in general?
No, no. What's the difference between the two? Are there more peace orders or more protective orders?
I'd say more protective orders. And I can definitely go back and get you specific numbers if you'd ever, you know, if you would like that. Although in in 2021, that wasn't the case. Peace orders were definitely higher. And it changes. And that's the thing with domestic violence. We can have a quiet period and then it's what I call off the hook. So it is a total roller coaster. I've been here over 13 years and there have been off the hook years and there have been quieter years. I mean, of course, it changes throughout the whole year. But I've had my last few bullets. I'm almost finished. Thank you for for your patience. So with you were hearing a few times, on average, it takes seven times before someone successfully leaves an abuser. It's important to note that there is the model of change. You know, we go through steps in our lives when we we start to contemplate, we start recognizing there's something that's not right and we need to do something different in our lives. And it's not uncommon, even whether it's substance abuse, domestic abuse, any kind of change that needs to be made where sometimes you take three steps forward and then you take two steps back. And we, and the biggest thing, the biggest bullet point, the note that I'd like to stress is we need to focus on why do abusers abuse more than why do people stay? You know, why do the victims not leave? Because statistically, and we have great Maryland statistics every year, the Maryland Network Against Domestic Violence will break down race, gender, as as mentioned earlier, age groups. And what we see consistently over and over again, the most dangerous time for someone is when they leave their abusive partner and that abusive partner loses the control. And so a lot of the fatalities, when you look at the Maryland Network's yearly report, you'll see ex boyfriend, ex husband. You'll see a protective order was recently filed. It could be child custody, court papers. So the most dangerous time for them is right after they leave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I would like to invite Kalisa Marsh, who's the director of the Safe Harbor Shelter. And obviously, the goal of that shelter is to provide a safe place for people when they do leave. So that's a good segue.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
First, I'd like to thank you for your continued support for Safe Harbor. Just a few statistics. In the last quarter alone, Safe Harbor has provided 551 bed nights. We've had 10 mothers, eight children. And this year, we've been pretty much full most of the year. Unfortunately, this means the numbers are kind of high.
Excuse me, ma'am, are some of those repeat folks?
This quarter, no. There were no. Yeah. We do have a lot of repeat, of course. It takes seven times. So we have ladies that come back a few times. But this time, it's all new women.
Are they all Calvert County?
No, not all Calvert County. For the majority, Calvert County, we do take a few out of county. We had a few human traffic victims
Really?
at the shelter. Just things are really
Were they local?
No, they were not local.
So if you get a
Baltimore, I'm sorry.
If you get a referral and you're full, what's what's?
I'm sorry?
If you get a referral and you're full, what's the process from there?
Depends on the severity of the case, if you may. We do provide some hotel stays when when we, when the budget permits us to. So, yeah. Other than that, we refer them, I'm sorry, to other agencies, Project Echo. We have a good relationship with some of the shelters over in St. Mary's and in Charles County. So, yeah, we try to find a place for them to go.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. So Safe Harbor is 24/7 shelter. We provide safety and security and support for individuals fleeing domestic violence. We do have case management services because a lot of times, once the ladies get there, they want to know what now? What do I do now? So we do have a case manager that she helps with resume building, job search. We do mock interviews. We teach them how to prepare a budget because some of them come with no budget, you know? So we apply for, you know, different benefits that that are available to them and research permanent housing options. That's like, soon as they get there, we hit the ground running like, okay, once they're settled in, where are you and your family going to go and be safe when you leave Safe Harbor? So I work a lot with them with that. We provide transportation to the jobs that they may get when they get there, medical appointments, court appearances, et cetera. We do work a lot with, I can't see with my glasses on. With a lot of other agencies, McKinney Vento, Calvert County Public Schools, Cornerstone, Calvert Center for Change, Southern Maryland Center for Family Advocacy Center for Family Advocacy Behavioral Health, Seeds of Courage and the Department of Social Services. And we get so much support from the community. It's unreal, especially during COVID. You know, different organizations had drive up supply drives where you drop off supplies. We have community members that, you know, drop supplies off at the sheriff's office. Folks that know where we are, they drop them off at the door. I mean, Calvert County really, really supports Safe Harbor and we definitely appreciate it.
You have any questions?
I have one more. So if someone leaves Safe Harbor, what percentage do you think actually go back into the same environment they they left for? A third, a quarter? A third, a quarter, a half?
Uh I would say a quarter, yeah, yeah. It's a lot of this, well, maybe we'll say half because I have the ones that come back. And usually, you know, by that seventh or eighth time, then they really move and, you know, uh get independent housing and. Move their families permanently from the situation, so.
You guys do a great job there.
Thank you so much, I have an excellent staff.
Without calling, I was always afraid to go there without calling.
And we do that, we call the sheriff's office sometime, like, there's a car parked at the bottom of the hill, it's been there for like five minutes, you know, there's signs all over.
Been when a lot of those calls.
And I'm telling you, they get there so fast, and the state troopers, I'm like, wow, yeah, it's exciting, so.
Thank you for doing what you do.
Thank you so much, thank you for your support.
I do have a question.
Okay, no, you go, go, and then I'll go.
Yeah, uh so recently in a meeting, I heard a drug rehab facility said that sometimes they like to get their clients out of their local communities. That it it's, you know, helps with their treatment. Are there cases in 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 this instance where someone would come in and you think it's better off if they c- if you could send them to Saint Mary's instead of keeping them here? Is that?
Um not really, if they're like originally from there or they have ties to the county, maybe, but um not really.
And back in the day, Lyndi Kelly went functions, would take leftover food and bring to the Safe Harbor. Do you all still do that?
We still get folks to do that, oh my goodness. We look so forward to when Dream Weaver has a function and we get these nice little packaged things, like everyone's eating good that night, no one has to cook, you know?
So I don't want you to get flooded with food, but you know, there may be circumstances where if people have an event and have some food left over, you could put that to good use.
We do.
Trying to put a plug out for you here.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
I well, I wanna again thank you all for all that you do and just one observation in my lifetime. I think one of the hard harder ones is are the um cyclical patients. The um women who come in and they don't have support at home because maybe their mother has been abused and. She doesn't give her daughter support, you know, suck it up, I put up with it for years or or what was your part in this? And I know there's two sides to every story, but for emotional and physical uh abuse, there's no excuse.
Well, to the end of the day, you don't lay your hands on a woman, bottom line.
Absolutely not.
You know, all the excuses and all the whatevers, you don't lay your hands on a woman and if you can't verbalize enough, then walk out and leave. But but these aren't men, so they're a bunch of cowards and.
Not at all.
So I already promised them I wouldn't get stirred up today, but that's just.
And to do that, you know, like some of them to the mother of their children, to see the moms come in, like I said, my staff is excellent. They definitely provide like a listening ear and they're very empathetic to everything. Um the kids are what, you know, touches me the most because you see how they're affected.
Yes.
You know, some kids come in, they might have some behavior issues because of what they've seen at home.
They think it's natural.
You know, some kids just, you know, just are depressed, so. But we do have a counselor that comes once a week, um and sometimes more if needed. And we do refer the kids out to a counselor, maybe Behavioral Health or some Calvert Center for Change, so. Try to get everybody help, but the kids, oh.
Are breaking.
Yeah.
So how many years has Safe Harbor been there?
Safe Harbor's been there what, twenty, not twenty-nine years, twenty? It's twenty-two, twenty-nine, something like that, not quite thirty yet. Yeah, we have staff that's been there for twenty-eight years, so, yeah.
That's good.
Some of the best.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
So now I'd like to invite um staff from the Calvert County State's Attorney's Office. Um and they're gonna talk about their particular role in in addressing these cases.
And we have the state's attorney himself.
Yes.
Well.
Mr. Harvey?
Good morning, everybody. Robert Harvey, state's attorney. I'm here today with members of my domestic violence unit. First of all, I wanna thank you all for taking the time to hear us and learn about this problem. Uh with me is Anthony Navalini, he's one of my assistant state's attorneys. Elsie Cole, an assistant state's attorney, is also here. Tammy Terrell, a victim advocate, and Allison Baker, victim advocate. Homer Rich, Little Camera Shy, apparently he uh he left, he's one of the investigators. As you know, domestic violence remains a very serious problem in Calvert County. In fact, as I've said many times, it's the second most prevalent type of case we see in Calvert. Behind alcohol-related or drug-related impaired driving cases. I'm told we have between sixty and ninety active cases at any given time in our office. And you know, we've been talking about domestic violence, but Commissioner Grasso really pointed out, it's really not just about violence. It's really, the more proper term is domestic abuse. Because abuse, domestic abuse comes in all kinds of forms, economic, psychological, and there's also physical. Now, the state's attorney's office typically doesn't learn about domestic abuse until it escalates to violence. An incident occurs, somebody calls the police and a person or persons get arrested and charged with a crime. Uh typically, uh that can range anywhere from murder. In fact, I'm dealing right now with a classic murder, domestic violence murder case that happened in our county about six or seven years ago. Down in Lusby where a fellow shot and killed his wife in front of their two-year-old child. And that fellow was coming back asking the court to reduce his life imprisonment sentence. And I'm hoping and praying that that doesn't happen. But we do see it, the occasional murder. We see first and second degree assaults, destruction of property, violations of protective orders. And this is what happens, my office receives these charges and we review them. We are empowered to conduct follow-up investigations, that's where Detective Rich comes in. We go out, we interview the witnesses, we gather all the evidence that we can to include the body cam videos and whatever else. Is out there in my office then, takes the case to court and presents it to a judge or jury, either in the district court or the circuit court. The objective in each case is the same, and that is to make sure that the abuse, whatever has occurred, does not happen again. The phrase break the cycle is very appropriate here, that's what it is. Domestic violence in that murder case that I was talking about happened again and again, the controlling behaviors, the psychological abuse, the stalking. Domestic violence is rarely a one-time thing, behavior repeats itself and then gets passed down to fu- future generations. Children see it happening and think it's appropriate, so that's this is how relationships are. It's extremely important that there be a meaningful intervention. And you've heard a great deal this morning about some of the organizations that provide that intervention. Sometimes the intervention can mean individual or family counseling, the abuser intervention program that you heard about is extremely important. We make referrals through the courts to that organization. I don't know, we can say every day, but we do it frequently. There's substance abuse and mental health counseling that's available. And yes, there is incarceration. And sometimes incarceration is appropriate and sometimes it has to occur and it does occur. These ac- these cases, as as my attorneys can tell you, these are the most difficult cases. In fact, sometimes I I feel like I should award them combat pay for for dealing with these cases day in and day out. Uh they involve family and interpersonal relationships. Often the accused, as you know, the accused abuser is the family breadwinner. What do you do then? How do you deal with these situations?
Actually, sir, let me let me ask something because this is repetitive repetitive. Obviously, the inner family knows so much more than before it gets out to law enforcement or anything like this. What can a family do? Maryland is not a very good state at being allowed to protect yourself. It's about after you've been hurt and abused and then whatever they have, and then it's this repetitive repetitive. What level of protection is is a person allowed to do where it's your daughter, your sister, whatever? You know this guy is coming after him, the police have been after her and said, hey, stay away from her. He shows up at the house, you've got a decent job somewhere, you've got a security clearance. This bum shows up and you level him, aren't you in the grease now because you tried to protect your sister or your, you know, or what have you?
Well, obviously you are, and I certainly can't encourage somebody to take matters into their own hands.
But that's what I mean, and and Maryland's not looking, you know, Maryland is so famous for, oh, let's do this, let's do that. But there's no consequences or teeth in it for the person that's consistently, that's why I ask, are these consistently doing this? You know, after a couple of times, when does a family have a right to protect itself? And say, you're not gonna harm my daughter, my sister, what have you. If you do, I'm gonna lay hands on you.
Persons do have the right to file for protective orders and peace orders on behalf, protective orders on behalf of minor children. So they can't, the problem, Commissioner Hart, is that you don't always know about these things. Commissioner Grasso mentioned earlier about a situation that gone on for twenty years and nobody knew it.
Sure, sure, but you know, you know those ones that, you know, and I'm sure law enforcement, it's a callback out there again. And and I I have a gentleman that um I never would have thought that his son-in-law was beating his daughter the way she was. She's a sweetheart and I was appalled. And he was an older gentleman and he was afraid of him too. The son wasn't, you know, but the son was no match for this guy type thing. And it's like, you know, in the old days, you'd have just took care of this guy and he wouldn't beat on her no more. But it just doesn't seem, it seems like law enforcement's hands are tied and you say, hey, stop hitting her. But they're not even incarcerated that long.
Well, I know each each day, every day, when I get up in the morning, there's a report that I get from the sheriff's office and also the state police. And what you see time and again are people um calling, police responding for these calls of domestic violence, three or four a day you get.
You think to be mandatory sentencing that go down, I mean, and I know that the breadwinner thing, but what differences are, you know what I mean?
Commissioner Hart, that is not the direction state of Maryland's going.
I I know, and 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 you know, and and.
We're on a U-turn from that.
This is my ninth year of seeing this and it keeps going, so so what, obviously what they're doing doesn't work. When there's no consequences and there's no law enforcement, it is proven time and time again. But these poor women and these children constantly, you would think. I know we're such a small county, but we're not the only county, which you would think. These people that run and say they care about people would truly say enough is enough.
You would think so, sir. You would think so.
I mean, it's just common sense and I just don't understand how they can allow these people to be to be beat like this.
I just wanna say from our point of view in our office, the overriding concern is always going to be public safety. We always strive to make sure that there are consequences, meaningful consequences, whenever these kinds of acts occur. I think we've been fairly successful at at getting those consequences and we're gonna continue to strive to do that. But we are.
You have to be frustrated.
We're in the minority. Well, I get really frustrated when I go up to Annapolis every year and start talking about legislation. Because as I say, the direction is exactly the opposite across the board, not just domestic violence, juvenile.
Yeah.
Don't get me started.
But I don't understand how they can actually publicly come out and say, hey, I know this person did this to somebody. But we're not gonna put anything in to deter this and sleep at night. I don't know how, I don't know how they do that and I I and you know, it's not, and and they're wrong. Because the numbers, the numbers prove it out, it's not an anomaly, you know, that just, well, you know, covid was a spike, sure. But it was there before covid and it's not showing that, okay, covid's a, you know, the big thing's over now and it's still continuing.
Right, well, maybe something will happen on the federal level since I believe a congressman got carjacked last night, maybe that'll bring the point home.
Just to say, if it doesn't affect them, they're not gonna care.
Well, that's it, you know, there's an old expression, it's not a problem till it happens to you.
Exactly. And I used to say, nobody needs a lawyer or likes a lawyer until you need one, well, same is true. Uh I want to, Mr. Navalini, well, first of all, I wanted to ask Elsie Cole, Commissioner Hart, you had a question a little bit about, a little bit ago about repeat offenders? And I think if she could perhaps address that question for you.
Sure, um well, as you've heard, we don't have uh perfect statistics on this for in county. But anecdotally, um I've been here under two years. It has not taken very long to see that repeat offenders are a huge issue. Um that uh problems uh of escalation uh create situations where we often hear from the victims. Well, this has been going on for a long time, this is the first time I called. Or this is the time I thought I was going to die. I I hear that a lot from victims. Um so so the repeat offenders, it's happening in the court and it's also happening outside the court before we even get there. So I'd say that that the vast majority of the cases we see, it's not the first time that that man has ever laid hands on her.
Cause he's getting away with it.
Exactly.
So let me ask you, so so you get that nine-one-one call, this bum's beat on her, okay, it's obvious, everybody's seen it, how long is he going to jail for? Does he even stay the night or is it just one night now?
You asking me?
Uh huh.
Uh.
Typically.
It's prob- probably, well, when charges are initially filed and you get a bail reviewed, probably is one night now.
So now it's the second time, how long's he go for?
Well, um it's two different things. Uh when you go to court, you actually go to court, there's a trial or there's a plea and there's a conviction. Uh repeat offenders are gonna go to jail, yeah.
For how long?
Oh, it depends on the individual judge, individual case, there's no.
So there's no like mandate mandate, like one year, two years, whatever, it could be thirty days suspended, it could be anything. And tha- and that's the thing with this repeat stuff, for there's no consequences, no teeth and you're, and all you can do is your job. The law enforcement picks them up, you prosecute them and and I just don't understand why there's not laws in place.
And I I don't mean to pass the buck, but I often get blamed for sentences. Uh the state's attorney does not sentence.
And the judge is working with what he's got, I mean, the judge doesn't even have the tools himself.
So much has changed over the years, I mean, the recidivism rate is not only for for domestic violence, recidivism rates across the board. I mean, you're gonna have those repeat offenders no matter what you do. But the commissioners, I think, is what he's probably referring to a lot. And the commissioners used to have some input as to, you know, when they held somebody, if they kept seeing the same person, they would throw a bond on them. You know, and and jack that bond up or do whatever, or ask the officer when it was a, you know, more face-to-face type personal thing. But now the state's mandating everything to do.
Yeah, and.
In terms of, in terms of bail, you're only allowed to hold somebody uh without bail or even set a bail if they're a clear and present danger to the, somebody else or themselves. Or they're a flight risk. And so what you see, especially for the first time coming through, uh and this is, this has been mandated by our courts, this isn't just, this is, this is coming out of Annapolis. Uh we just can't hold people anymore.
Right.
Uh yeah, murderers, we can hold them, we can hold first degree assaults, but uh.
Isn't it amazing because you're violating their rights? Forget the person that got beat half to death, you know?
There there was a push on that some somebody concluded that uh we were holding people without bail or with a high bail. And it was affecting people who didn't have money, uh lesser um income people. So they decided that that was not right and that was not fair, so that went out the window. So now, it's very rare, frankly, that you see a setting of a cash, it's e- either usually no bond at all for your really, really bad cases. Or PR, personal recognizance and they're out. Maybe some conditions. There may be some conditions through the detention center for pre-trial services and things like that, but a cash bond is pretty rare these days.
And there are far less, there are far less people in our jail now than there were in nineteen ninety-three when I worked there.
Absolutely.
They should be ashamed of themselves, I mean, they should flat be ashamed to, they they should have to go, these lawmakers should have to go on these calls with law enforcement and look at these people in the face and then turn around and say, oh, it's okay for you to get beat on. I I I don't know.
Commissioners, I can't, all five of you, I can't agree with you more.
I hate it, I hate this month every year, I swear, I swear I do.
Mr. Navalini wanted to give you just a little bit of information about a couple of other things and then we'll we'll call it a day.
Just a brief comment um to what you all were saying about recidivism as a state's attorney. Um these cases are some of the most difficult for us to prosecute. And the reason for that is, we usually only have one witness. These are two people that are in their home, some interaction happens, some physical abuse happens. These don't think, don't usually happen at the grocery store.
No, they're cowards, they do it behind closed doors.
Right, and so, you know, if you have a drug case, you have policemen who see someone with drugs on them, someone breaks into a house, we can take their fingerprints, find that they're there. Someone punches someone in the face, the only person who can say who did it is the person who was there. And that makes it incredibly difficult for us for for many reasons. Um but that's not what I was here, brought here to discuss with you. Mr. Harvey asked me to speak about solutions and proactive measures that we're taking to try and combat this problem. Because as I've noticed in my life, and I'm sure all of you have too, anyone can identify a problem and say, well, what's wrong here? We have people who are being abused by their intimate partners, it happens all the time, we all know someone who's been in that situation. But to find a solution is oftentimes much more difficult and a a. And a, a conversation I have frequently with my witnesses, um, in these cases, witnesses or victims, if you want to call them that. Um, is a lot of them haven't found themselves in these situations before. They've gone through their life, had regular relationships that were not abusive with various members of the community. Now they find themselves in a situation where they have homes, children with the person who is their abuser. And they don't know where to start. And about ten years ago, I used to work for, um, Division of Probation across the street. I became a member of what was called the, what is called the Family Violence Coordinating Council. And I think the most important part of that is in the name, the Family Violence Coordinating Council. Because these things, these incidents don't just affect the husband and the wife, whoever is directly involved in the physical altercation. They affect everyone in the household, children. We see people who have their grandparents in the home and they're dealing with this. All down to the dog, you know, where, where are we going to take the dog? And so they created this council and it's, it's made up of different members, member agencies in the county in order to coordinate, um, resources and build relationships within the different agencies so that we can try and coordinate a response and give people the answers. I think we would all be naive to say, whenever anyone asks us a question, I know the answer is all of them. We all like to think that, I'm sure. But we don't. And frequently I come to the, I, the same conclusion, I don't have an answer for people. And so what we try to do with this council is to, if I don't know the answer, who does? Who can I refer someone to? Who can I have them call and say, hey, I have this problem, how can, how can you help me? What resources, resources are available? So we meet quarterly, um, some of the agencies you've heard from this morning. We have Child Protective Services, a member from the, uh, school, public schools, Southern Maryland Center for Family Advocacy. Um, Unstoppable U, which is a, um, private organization that's a charity organization here. Um, State Police, the Sheriff's Office, Sharon DiMaggio is, um, a, a huge resource for us and really does all the heavy lifting for me. So my, my hats off to you Sharon for still here. Um, you make me look good in these meetings. Um, we, the state's attorney's office participates, Pro Probation and also the Center for Change. And so we talk about different cases that come up, not specifically about the people involved because that would probably inappropriate and violate HIPAA. But we, but we talk more about the situations that we've come across and say, here's a solution that we've come to. Um, we also discuss the research sources that are available and what each agency does and how each agency can help each other. And my hope is, I know I certainly make referrals when people call me and say, I need help. Okay, well, here, I have this person's number, this person's email, call them or I'll, and, and get them in touch with the proper resources. And so what we also do is always look for something new because there's always someone coming out with a new, new look, new set of eyes on the same problem. So we usually have a presentation at every meeting quarterly about something that's maybe not even in the county but that we, that could possibly help someone moving forward. And so the last few, for example, we had, um, a representative for a phone app where you can go on there and they will book a room anonymously for the victim in a case. Because a lot of times, I think as Mr. Colato said, we have stalking going on where people are showing up, where people are, where the victims are looking for them still. And so if you book a hotel room under your own name, they can come in and say, I'm looking for Jane Doe. Jane Doe's in room one oh two. Now we have another room. So this app, um, allows them to book a name, or a room under an anonymous name. We also had a presentation for a service that offers anonymous, um, phone counseling for victims and for offenders. And the last one, um, which is something I had never even thought of, um, Mr. DiMaggio arranged for a speaker to come from the Linda Kelly Animal Shelter. And I hadn't even thought of this, but when, hearing the presentation, it made perfect sense to me. As we mentioned before, a lot of times the people who are the perpetrators of this are the breadwinners. And they, the people who are gonna leave, the victims, usually have their clothes on their back and two kids in their arms and a car full of whatever they can pack in for the night because this horrible thing just happened while someone may be going to jail, maybe not even going to jail or to be released soon. And so the, the Linda Kelly Animal Shelter actually has, um, fin- financing available where they will temporarily house a pet. And so, we try, and, and saying that, what we're trying to do then is remove all of the reasons that people would have to say, I have to go back. Well, I have to go back and take care of the dog. Well, that's where he is. We have a place that you can go. They'll take care of your dog for a little bit till you get yourself on your feet and move forward. Um. And so that's what we do with that. Um, I think Mr. Harvey asked me to also speak about other resources. Um, the Southern Maryland Center for Family Advocacy is a group that is, I believe, tri-county. And what they do is they provide advocates to go and help people to file peace and protective orders. Usually protective orders if people are married. This is important because a lot of people, like I mentioned before, this is the first time they've ever had to do this. I've never had to file a protective order or a peace order. And, and I'm sure a lot of people here have not and wouldn't even know the, the first place to start. They help with that, filling out the paperwork, going to court, providing escorts to court so that they're not intimidated. I mean, I've, I've been in court prosecuting cases and you just see the evil eye coming when people are on the stand. It, it's astounding to see in, in person. Because we always hear these stories about how these things are going on, but to actually see someone glaring at a witness as they're testifying in the witness box is, 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 like I said, astounding. And so to ha- so we have a member of the sheriff's office also, I think, works hand in hand with them, goes to the court and advocates for people to get these protective orders in place. We, there also is a resource, um, called Vine Link, which is also very important. What Vine Link is, it was, it's a, a notification system that you can go online, it's vine link dot com and you look up a person who's currently at the jail in any facility in the state of Maryland. It's in mul- it's in multiple states, but from Maryland, you find the, the county that you think they're being held. Put in their name and then you put in your contact information, phone number or email. And when they're set to be released, it will send you either a text message or a phone call, I believe, or it'll send you an email and say, Mr. Such and Such is being released from the jail. And it allows victims to know to be on the lookout because, um, as we were saying before, we try to get sentences that are as, as appropriate as we can and harsh for situations where people are being very seriously harmed. I have yet to get a life sentence for any of these cases, so with that being said, at some point, people are getting out of jail. And this allows people to know and to put themselves in a place to be as safe as they can. And so that's what we do through the council and through the state's attorney's office. We speak to victims and try and point them in direct, the right direction in addition to our duties in prosecuting cases best we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Just a few more, um, resources to mention before, uh, we close. Um, the Children's Advocacy Center, they do evaluations for children that are in these cases. Um, very critical in a safe and supportive setting. Um, we have homeless prevention and, and grants that Lifestyles of Maryland gets to, to, um, hotels and to house, um, women or survivors, um, of domestic violence. So when we talk about housing, that's very critical, getting them started in, with some rental assistance. Um, so they can, um, transition out of that living situation. You already mentioned the animal shelter. Um, and then of course, Commission for Women, um, coordinates a lot of this awareness, um, because that's one of their roles in terms of advocacy. Um, and this has been an issue that's been at the center of Commission for Women, um, for many, many years. They were instrumental in helping get Safe Harbor launched. Um, the clothes closet is something that's always available and if, um, anyone is interested, they can email calvertwomen at gmail dot com. And, um, if they need clothes or if they, um, wanna donate clothes. Um, and that, that, that's housed at Saint Hal- Paul's Episcopal Church in Prince Frederick. And the other exciting thing is, um, they are gonna be organizing a Safe Harbor Supply Drive. Um, so household supplies, non-perishable foods and grocery store gift cards are needed. Um, October, Saturday, October twenty-eighth from eight AM to ten AM. And it's a drive-by at Saint Paul's Episcopal Church. Just real easy, you can drop off your items there, um, in Prince Frederick. Um, and yep, we had a great turnout with that last time and so, um, it's a nice time of year, right before the holiday season to get a lot of those things into the hands of, um, people that need them. And then lastly, I just wanted to, um, mention the hotlines. Um, so we have a national hotline, the one eight hundred seven nine nine SAFE. Um, there's a local hotline, one eight seven seven four six seven five six two eight. And then you can also text love is or two two five two two, um, for intimate, uh, partner violence, um, situations where you're looking for support. So it's important to reach out, um, no matter what stage you are in, in, in this situation. Um, so, and there's plenty of people, as you've heard, that are here to provide assistance and guidance. Um, so we are lucky to have a community like Calvert County, um, that is so close knit and we work together as a team to address these, these unfortunate issues. Do you have any questions for me?
Jen, I, I mean this with all sincerity. Thank you. Every time I call you, you are Johnny on the spot. Just like the girl that come in the other day, she said Jen called me same day. I always say you're an angel and I mean that one thousand percent. Thank you. Cause I, I know a hundred percent, when I'm talking to that person, I said, this girl's gonna call you and she will do everything humanly possible and you do it every time. So thank you.
Well, I am really lucky to have such partners that operate the same way. And I think you heard Sharon's name mentioned a couple of times, but she is the exact same for the Calvert County Sheriff's Office. And Kalisa, and I, I contact her if there's ever anybody that needs housing and we, we find a plan. So I'm very fortunate to have, um, partners that operate the same way. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Brings us to a work session, Department of Planning and Zoning, Calvert County zoning ordinance update. Good morning.
Good morning. Actually afternoon.
Afternoon, yeah, I'm sorry. I was hoping.
Yeah.
At least it's not good evening yet. Somebody's gotta start.
Okay, I, I think we've established that it's good afternoon, commissioners.
Okay.
So my name is Will Hager and I'm a planner with the Department of Planning and Zoning. That's been helping out with the zoning ordinance update process. And with me today by my side, uh, to my left is Ron Marney. Um, and, and Ron Marney is our environmental planning regulator. He's a subject matter expert on all the topics that we're gonna be going over today. And to my right is Rachel O'Shea, zoning planner. And before we get into the focus of today's work session, I just wanna go over a brief timeline on where we are in the process, uh, the zoning ordinance update process and how we got here. So to begin, we had a joint work session on April nineteenth, which gave an overview, overview of the zoning ordinance and the purpose, strategies and, and goals of this update. The draft zoning ordinance was made available to the public on May tenth. We had a joint work session June twenty-first where the draft zoning districts and zoning map were introduced. We had our first public forum, June twenty-second, uh, and the focus of that public forum was the draft zoning districts and zoning map. We had a second public forum, August twenty-fourth and focused on critical area, marine and water dependent facilities and floodplain. And we also had a work session with the Planning Commission, September twentieth, covering the same subjects. Since the first public forum, planning and zoning staff have met with a number of representatives from several organizations as well as individual citizens to discuss the proposed changes to the zoning update. And will continue meeting with groups and individuals throughout this process when requested. And since, uh, since close to the beginning of this process, we have been receiving written public comments via emails to the zoning ordinance update email address. And those comments were packaged and delivered to the B O C C prior to today's work session. And with any, uh, personal information included in those emails redacted. Questions and comments from the public, uh, both via email and from staff taking notes at public forums have been compiled and used to create an FAQ section on the zoning ordinance update website. Uh, the FAQ section will continue to be updated throughout this process. And if anyone in the public listening hasn't done so, you might wanna take a look to see if any questions you might have have already been answered there. So the focus of today's work session is the same as the August twenty-fourth public forum and the Sep- September twentieth work session with the Planning Commission, draft articles twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, critical area, marine and water dependent facilities and floodplain. And for this presentation, we're going to begin with the critical area. So Calvert County adopted the local critical area program in nineteen eighty-eight to implement the requirements of the nineteen eighty-four Maryland State Critical Area Act. The critical area includes all land within one thousand feet of the mean high water, of the mean high water line of tidal waters or the landward edge of tidal waters. A state critical, a statewide critical area commission was created to oversee the development and implementation of local critical area programs. And our environmental planning staff work closely with the critical area commission when revising this article as any substantive revisions require the approval of the state air, critical area commission. The critical area protects natural resources by reducing runoff, runoff pollution and associated impacts. And there are requirements for vegetation and impervious lot coverage and restrictions on development in identified habitat protection areas. The requirements for vegetation include that there must not be any net loss of forest within the critical area and a minimum amount of vegetation cover is required, typically fifteen percent for each lot or parcel. And I, I just wanna note here before moving forward, we received from some comments from the public that protections in the critical area aren't enough to protect the bay, that stormwater in Prince Frederick doesn't stay in Prince Frederick. Uh, so I just wanted to clarify in case there's any confusion. There are also regulations that protect streams, forests and sensitive environmental features outside of the critical area. But those regulations are located in different articles, draft articles twenty and twenty-one, natural resources and forest conservation. So the critical area functions as an overlay district and critical area regulations, if more restrictive than the underlying zoning district, will supersede the regulations of the zoning district. And within the critical area, there are several different land classifications which have their own regulatory standards and criteria, the characteristics of which are dependent on the intent and the purpose of the classification. The intensely developed area or IDA are areas of twenty or more contiguous acres where a mix of land uses predominate. IDAs are areas of concentrated development where little natural habitat occurs. An example of an IDA location in the county is Solomon's Town Center. Solomon's Island and most of the land adjacent to Back Creek is located within the IDA. The limited development area or LDA are areas characterized by low or moderate intensity development, but that also contain areas of natural plant and hat, and animal habitats. The LDA three is a subcategory of the LDA. It has the same regulatory requirements as the LDA with the exception that there's a minimum lot size requirement of three acres unless the lots are part of a clustered subdivision.
Unless you're in a town center.
Well, I think it would, uh.
If you're in a town center, you can do whatever you want. It's what I've learned.
Is that what you hear?
Yeah. I'm in critical areas and I have to have twenty acres to build one house, but we can build a hotel right on the river's edge in a town center.
Well, that, I think that's exactly what we're, we're getting into here.
Are you gonna stop that? I didn't know where to interject then, so I'm just going to.
Uh, so as far as whether you're in a town center or not, as that relates to the critical area, that's not necessarily gonna be material. Whether you're in, what overlay you're in is going to have a far greater impact in terms of what you are and are not able to do from a critical area perspective. Um, IDA versus LDA versus RDA have different lot coverage allotments. If you're in IDA, you don't have a lot coverage requirement. You don't have a minimum force cover requirement. These tend to constrain the properties within the critical area, especially existing lots and parcels, much more than anything else. You also have differences in, uh, zoning. There are portions of Solomon's that other, that are LDA that otherwise would be allowed more development, but because they are a critical area, they are limited to four units per acre max.
Hey Ryan, not to stop you in English, okay, for everybody else. So, so, so if I have something on the water and I chop down a tree, you get the president to blow me up, okay? But if I'm in a town center, I build a fortress and it's okay. So if I got the question right, are we gonna say, hey, just that little distinction's not gonna allow you to tear up that same. So, if I got the question right, are we gonna say, hey, just that little distinction's not gonna allow you to tear up that same water line that somebody can't do that if in a residential area? What's the English answer?
The English answer is you still have requirements and you are not able to do whatever you want, however you want.
So, I can't build a hotel if I buy a lot, Solomon's, Drum Point, whatever. I'm on the water. Excuse me, I'm in a town center, right. Can I build this massive hotel?
Not necessarily. I'd have to...
Yes or no?
It's good news.
It depends on the property, but I'd typically say no.
Okay. Good news.
Thanks.
We got this on tape, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Like I had someone come in and ask to do a quadplex and the answer was no, because of these regulations, not because of the local zoning.
Cool. Take a note.
Well, I'll wait till slide twelve. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so as we're finding out, the zoning, there's lots of layers to the zoning ordinance and all of these regulations. And so...
I'm sorry, I thought critical area superseded zoning.
Mm-hmm. I thought that was state of Maryland guidelines.
Cause I'm on a critical areas commission and they tell us we're in charge of everything. So, you're telling me that we can just change the zoning in a critical area and we don't have to abide by critical area rules and regulations?
I can answer that one. It's gonna become down to whichever is most restrictive. The most restrictive shall apply. And in the case of Calvert County, that's pretty much always gonna be the state.
All right. Glad to hear it. It's a good presentation. So, far as the... Yeah.
Okay, so I, I think as far as the most restrictive area in the critical area, that's gonna be the resource conservation area, which is characterized by natural environments or areas where resource utilization activities are taking place, including agriculture, forestry, fisheries, aquaculture, et cetera. And the land use regulations are the most restrictive in the R C A, including permitted residential density. The maximum residential density permitted in the R C A is one dwelling unit per twenty acres. But there are also special buffer management areas. Sometimes they're called modified buffer areas. And this is where it's been sufficiently demonstrated that the existing pattern and development prevents the critical area buffer from fulfilling its water quality and habitat functions and where development in accordance with specific provisions can be permitted in the buffer without a variance. And it's so small, I don't know if you can even see it on the screen, but there is a special buffer management area on this map, right at the tip of White Sands in the immediate area around the existing restaurant and marina. And so, within the critical area, there are layers of protections. And one of those layers are habitat protection areas. And probably the most significant habitat protection area is the critical area buffer. And the size of the critical area buffer varies depending in part on whether it's located in an I D A, L D A or R C A. But typically, the buffer is a minimum one hundred feet from tidal waters and expanded for contiguous sensitive environmental features like steep slopes and highly erodible soils. A critical area variance from the Board of Appeals is required for disturbance within the buffer. If the critical area variance criteria are met and a variance is granted, mitigation plantings are required for disturbance. And the mitigation required, if a variance is granted, is a rate of three, three square feet of plantings for every one square foot of disturbance, what we would call three to one mitigation.
And who approves that?
The mitigation amounts. That'd be done as part of my review of permit application. It'd be generated based off of the applicant's middle.
So, if I put a hundred bedroom, excuse me, a hundred unit hotel on the water, how many plants do I got to plant?
Well, the number of units wouldn't be material. It'd be the amount of impervious surface, the amount of clearing, how much existing forest there is, how close you are to the water. There's any number of parts of that regulation that will generate mitigation.
So, a twenty thousand square foot building?
How close is it to the water? I got you now. I mean, realistically, I couldn't give you a solid number without a real application. But I mean, like, if you're gonna try and do something in the buffer, expect it to be expensive.
What if it's in the middle of a field and there's no trees around?
Uh, I mean, if this property doesn't meet minimum fifteen percent forest cover, you're gonna have the same kind of scenario. Cause I mean, that would be where I'm thinking is if you have a nice, large, wide open farm field that you wanna develop, probably L D A or R C A most likely, you're not gonna meet minimum forest cover. You're probably not gonna be in a reduced buffer. There's probably gonna be a lot of things that are coming, gonna come into play that are gonna really add up on the cost of that project and limit its development potential.
Good. Don't back off that. That's where I, the part where I like that you know how to do that part. The English part makes my eye twitch sometimes, but that's the part I like that you do. So, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay, so there are a few proposed changes to the critical area regulations in this draft, which were developed by environmental planning staff in consultation with the state critical area commission. These proposed changes include allowing the department to not require a variance from the Board of Appeals for a number of activities in the critical area buffer and instead process the request through an administrative variance. The type of activities this would apply to include a new development or redevelopment activity associated with a water dependent facility, slope stabilization activities, and septic systems on lots created before December thirteenth nineteen eighty-eight.
So, for clarification, as Commissioner Hart likes to say in English, so you wanna allow people to do these things without having to ask for a variance?
No, no, that's not exactly right.
I'll tackle that one too. So, for these specific activities where we felt it made logical sense, we are offering them the option of the admin variance. Now, we chose that specifically not so that it was not done solely administratively, but they still also need consent from adjoining property owners. So, if they don't get that, they don't have a complete admin variance application, they have to go right back to that full variance. This is specifically to address things like major erosion projects. That's why we have that slope stabilization. If you have an existing lot, you should be able to get a septic without having to go over to the Board of Appeals and do three to one mitigation. We try to do things like that. And regarding the marine, water dependent facilities, we'll talk about it later in the presentation or will, will, but that does not give you carte blanche to do whatever you want. It is not allowing you to put things like parking lots and other ancillary aspects of that within the buffer. This is simply trying to allow these existing facilities to function on a normal level.
So, what, I'm sorry, what's defined as a water dependent facility?
Think of things like your peers. Think of shore erosion control projects, things like that.
Marinas.
Marinas?
Yeah, that'd be your commercial peers, so your marinas and such.
And why are you putting a date on the septic system?
That actually comes from COMAR and things like that. We are trying to give...
COMAR's got nineteen eighty-eight in it?
This particular one, I'd have to see where the exact date came from, whether it was COMAR, whether it was from our own regulations. But we are specifically trying to capture those lots prior to the enactment of a specific amendment that we'd say, look, all these prior lots that basically do not conform, they're probably in the buffer or majority of them are in the buffer, particularly in communities like Calvert, and to give them the option of the admin variance. I can research where that exact date came from. I can't recall off the top of my head. But it, it came specifically from an amendment to either our ordinance or COMAR.
Okay.
I have a question. Okay, critical area. Critical is critical. That's a big word. May authorize disturbance to the buffer for the following activities. A new development or redevelopment activity associated with a water dependent facility. A thousand dwelling places?
It's not a water dependent facility.
This, what does this mean? How large can this be, the redevelopment? I mean, is, are there any, any restrictions placed on what you can build, how large it can be? This seems very broad to me.
It's because you're looking at it without the context of the rest of the ordinance. So, when you look at this, we clearly define what a water dependent facility is. We can clearly go into detail in terms of what aspects of that. So, again, how I talked about earlier, we're gonna discuss those ancillary. So, again, say you have a marina, you can't emplace your offices and your parking within the buffer, but you are most likely going to need a boardwalk and access. Things that we're basically trying to provide an alternative for these larger facilities. Again, think of like your Solomon's area that has these existing, so that they can do them without the necessary variance to the Board of Appeals. Again, we're trying to give them a quicker process so that these facilities can be maintained or constructed in a reasonable manner. Again, you're not gonna be able to put a hotel in the buffer. That is not a marine or water dependent facility. The easiest and quickest way to define this is something that wouldn't require an M D E authorization. If it doesn't require an M D E authorization, so if it's not your peers, if it's not your shore erosion control, if it's, it's not, again, a boat ramp, something along these things that would be administered by M D E, we're not going to view that and it's not going to be defined in the ordinance as a marine facility. So, you're not gonna be able to do carte blanche in the buffer. We are not proposing that at all. We're just trying to treat this, this type of activity reasonably. Because if you have a peer, if you need to do a shore erosion control project, odds are you're going to have some form of buffer impact and we want you to be able to maintain that to a reasonable extent.
So, Ron, you said you can be more restrictive, correct? Can't be less, as I was saying, you can be more. So, let's say M D E has guidelines out in the critical area and that facility would be very destructive, in the office's opinion, to that shoreline. Would, would you be able to have an ordinance to be more restrictive than the state? So, and sometimes people say, well, the state says I can do it, but can the county be more restrictive to protect that shoreline?
Absolutely. We have people that come in that they wanna do a peer. The M D E doesn't care about things like our harbor lines or ladder line setbacks, where we're trying to ensure usable waterway for everyone and adjoining property owners. That's something the county does.
Would the town center make a difference?
Town center? No. But I mean, so let's say, again, another thing you gotta remember, it's still, it's not a, if you apply for an admin variance or a full variance, that does not mean you will get it. So, let's say that someone applies for an admin variance and they have a major marina that they wanna put in and they have like a pavilion and all sorts of things that they see are part of it that they'd like in the buffer. I would look at that and I'd say, well, you still need to apply not only M D E's requirements, but also D N R's requirements and things for as to what would be permissible within that buffer. I'd look at that and I'd say, no. And then they can go to the Board of Appeals if they don't like that answer.
Cause this is something I've learned in my time here. They always say three votes rule the day and that is true to an extent. But if you don't have to do it, then sometimes, you know, if you have to come out here and sit and tell the people out there, hey, this pristine area, I'm actually gonna do something, they put something in motion that's gonna destroy that and disrupt that, then they gotta answer for that when they go for reelection, because this county's overwhelmingly spoke how they feel about that. So, that's why if this is the time, my twenty percent would be to make sure that we would be able to be more restrictive if we felt that it, that was needed to protect that shoreline or protect that habitat, than to just say, well, state didn't say anything about it and then we stand there and then we're left with whatever.
Yeah, and again, if they apply for that admin variance and we feel that it's beyond the scope of what we want to entertain through that process...
And we have that now. That's in our book right now.
Yeah, that's no different for any admin variance, whether that's currently, like, if you apply for an admin variance for anything that's on the books now and we feel that it's beyond the scope of what that is, can be addressed in that process, then you would, we would say no and you'd go to the Board of Appeals. Likewise, if they go to impact that buffer, you gotta remember, like, we're not able and I would not authorize them to pave that buffer outright. And they also have to plant it and establish it. So, let's think about, again, like a theoretical and like in the Solomon's Town Center, someone says they wanna do a motel with a nice marina. Well, they go to build something on there. Part of their requirement isn't simply their minimum forest cover. It's not simply mitigating for their added lot coverage. It's not simply mitigating and getting the variances for whatever they're gonna need to do for those marine constructions associated with it. They also have to establish that buffer. By establish, that means it needs to be fully planted out with woody vegetation.
Right, but even done all that, now it still exists. And I had it in my head and I just, I just lost it. But, but by, so if they go, if they go to the Board of Appeals, we have no say after that.
No, we could appeal it if we disagree with it. So could the state. That's why if you apply for any critical area variance, it is not granted on the spot. You have to wait till you have the written order. Then you must wait thirty days from the date of signature on that. That is the appeals period written into COMAR. And then they have to resubmit after that.
And they grant it. Can the Board of County Commissioners say no?
Or of County Commissioners can appeal it to circuit court.
But they can only appeal it. Okay. Gotcha. Okay.
As could D N R, which we've had them do that in the past. And they comment and they are very good with supporting us in terms of every single variance. A variance does not occur that does not go to D N R for comment. And it would be no different for this. If we offer the admin variance process, they will still have to meet all criteria enumerated in COMAR and they will still have to wait for that mandatory waiting period and they will still have to get comment from D N R.
And that can't be waived.
The waiting period, no, it cannot.
No, no, that, you know, like, any, like going to for a variance and saying, well, I don't think this type of vegetation, you know, all the plants that you gotta do and all that stuff.
Oh, yeah, no, you can't even get a variance from that. The Board of Appeals doesn't have that authority. No one can grant a variance for that.
Okay, good.
I think that bottom line, that, I think that staff felt that these projects require expertise from engineering, soil conservation, the Department of Planning and Zoning, and not necessarily a lay board's approval. And it also allows the department to respond more expeditiously to emergency type stable situations when you have a slope stabilization activity that's needed. And so, the draft also proposes to revise how the critical area buffer is expanded for contiguous steep slopes. Under the current ordinance, in the case of contiguous slopes fifteen percent or greater, the buffer is expanded four feet for every one percent of slope or to the top of the slope, whichever is greater. And there is a consensus that this methodology is both cumbersome and looks arbitrary when delineated on plans. In the draft zoning ordinance, this has been revised so that in the case of contiguous slopes of fifteen percent or greater, the buffer is expanded to the top of the slope plus fifty feet. And this is a less cumbersome methodology, which makes the permit process, process simpler and quicker for the applicant. The draft critical area article also includes regulations which protect the cliff areas along the shoreline from development. These primarily include building setbacks from cliffs, which generally range from one hundred feet to three hundred feet, depending on the location and the characteristics of existing development in the area. And a section that is new to the zoning ordinance and included in this draft addresses criteria and conditions for the development of solar energy generating systems in the critical area. This section comes directly from relatively recent revisions to state critical area regulations. And it establishes permissions, criteria and conditions for permitted major, minor and accessory solar energy generating systems, allows small residential accessory solar energy generating systems in the buffer. And the Department of Planning and Zoning may not authorize a major or minor solar energy generating system in a habitat protection area, with the exception if they are located over existing legally developed lot coverage in a modified buffer area. So, the next article we're gonna cover is draft article twenty-three, Marine and Water Dependent Facilities. Draft article twenty-three includes the location of established harbor lines and shorelines permitted and prohibited waterfront uses and conditions, defines and regulates the usable waterway area, conditions for private peers, community peers, commercial peers and marinas, conditions for water dependent facilities and activities, public beaches and other public water oriented recreation, and criteria for shore erosion protection works. And there's a lot of overlap with critical area in this article for obvious reasons. And the Maryland Department of Environment has approval authority on projects like shore erosion protection works that occur in the waters of Maryland. So, one revision we made to this article was adding an exception to the requirement that a private pier be located on a property as an accessory structure to a single family dwelling. The, the exception allows for a private pier to be built on an undeveloped property if it is in contiguous ownership with a property that has a single family dwelling but lacks a repairing right.
Good. That's what I wanted to know. Good. Okay.
And I think this slide kinda touches on something that was discussed a little earlier. Another example of revision in this section is the section addressing non-water dependent facilities that are associated with a water dependent facility or activity. So, this revision, you know, we think strengthens the regulation by removing the statement insofar as possible from the beginning of the sentence, so that non-water dependent facilities like parking, et cetera, are required to be located outside of the critical buffer in no insofar as possible language. There are also a number of relatively minor... There are also a number of relatively minor revisions made to this article, including some based off of recent revisions made at the state level. Mainly uh, many of which are aren't necessarily policy changes, but revisions made for clarification purposes. And if anyone listening uh, would like more details and specifics on those specific revisions or other revisions, we don't have the time to cover in this presentation. Please see the document which compares draft articles twenty-two through twenty-four with the current zoning ordinance, which is available on the zoning ordinance update website. So article twenty-four of the draft zoning ordinance contains the floodplain regulations and this is another article where these. Aren't just county requirements, but these are regulations required by FEMA. And floodplain regulations include uh, things like regulations to. Ensure proposed development does not increase flooding or create a dangerous situation during flooding flooding, including on another individual's property. Uh, and if a structure is involved, it must be constructed to minimize damage during flooding. And in the floodplain article, there are different regulatory standards depending on whether the location is considered a coastal or non-coastal floodplain. Since the flooding that occurs in these areas has different characteristics. In Calvert County, the vast majority of development located in the floodplain are in the older waterfront communities like Brooms Island, Reezy Point, Cove Point, et cetera. That were de- uh, developed long before zoning. So when a government uses the term floodplain, what they're typically referring to is what's known as the regulated floodplain. These are areas with at least one percent annual chance of flooding and are subject to federal, state and county regulations. It's also sometimes called the one hundred year floodplain or special flood hazard area. These all mean the same thing. So as an example, what we're looking at here is the regulated floodplain in Long Beach. In these maps FEMA delineates special flood hazard areas and base flood elevations. These special flood hazard areas can more or less be categorized into A zones and V zones. You can see the V zones here delineated in orange and the A zones are shaded red. The areas within the A zone are vulnerable to coastal or tidal flooding by high tide hurricanes, tropical storms or steady onshore winds. What differentiates a V zone from an A zone is that a V zone has an additional hazard associated with high velocity wind and wave action. So as you can see, hopefully you can see down at the bottom of the screen. Uh, the base flood elevation for the A zone in Long Beach is four feet above sea level and within the V zone, it's a little higher at six feet above sea level. So in Long Beach, there's a flooding risk within the V zone on lots and a few structures directly adjacent, exposed to the bay. And there's also a flooding risk within the A zone that encompasses portions of the lots on both sides of Long Beach Drive. And for structures that are partially located within a special flood hazard area, the floodplain requirements apply for the entirety of the structure.
So do you know, have they made adjustments to this map based on projected sea level rise?
FEMA has not addressed the uh, any change to sea level rise. The last adjustment to our maps was done in twenty thirteen. We are currently updating our flood county wide flood mitigation plan and we are going to do some modeling to try and have some more. Predictive measures to try and address for things like that.
So if I wanted to replace one of these old cottages down at Long Beach on the waterfront with a new house, would I have to elevate that house?
Yes, you would. You'd have to meet our current free board. And if it was passed after the, these changes were done, then you have to meet the free board as established at that time.
But I could build a house.
Yeah, as long as you meet the engineering standards for your foundation and elevation.
Was there forty year floodplain done? Was that the one that was done in thirteen? Was that long ago?
The twenty thirteen is when we had the last FEMA update. You have your uh, what's referred to as X zones, which is probably what you're referring to. That's not part of the. It's while it's mapped, it's not part of the regulated floodplain. So we don't have anything for that because FEMA does not. Do that. All of our mapping is basically set by the federal government.
We don't do any mapping locally as far as the low line areas that we know.
Now, we have uh, mitigation plans to try and address the flooding, but we have not done our own independent mapping and regulation based off of that mapping. If that is desired, once the analysis is done as part of the uh. Flood mitigation plan that's in progress, we could do that. There are jurisdictions that have done that.
So Ron spoke to the criti- uh, the community rating system, the C R S program earlier today. We included a slide here because it is very relevant when talking about floodplain regulations. So as was discussed earlier in today's meeting, an important part of the national flood insurance program is the community rating system or C R S program. The C R S program is a voluntary incentive program that rewards participating communities by giving discounts to residents and businesses on their flood insurance premiums. Communities are rewarded credits based uh, for certain activities and enacted regulations. And are designated a class ranking which determines your premium reduction. Calver County is currently a class eight. Which allows for a ten percent reduction in flood insurance premiums. So one of the most significant regulatory requirements of the floodplain is building elevation. Building elevation is a technique that involves raising a building above the base flood elevation so that water can flow under the building during a flood event. Freeboard is the additional amount of height above the base flood elevation at which a structure's lowest floor must be elevated to be in accordance with the regulations. It's also known as the flood protection elevation. These two terms, freeboard and flood protection elevation are sometimes used interchangeably. In Calver County, freeboard is currently two feet above base flood elevation under the current regulations. In the draft zoning ordinance update, it's proposed to be increased to four feet above the base flood elevation. The floodplain regulations also require electric, electric and mechanical systems be clo- located above freeboard and. One of the proposed changes in the draft regulations includes requiring the surface of subdivision access roads in the floodplain to be at the flood protection elevation. Instead of the base flood elevation. According to, according to uh, did you have a question?
Yeah, so why would you double that and any scientific?
I can tackle that one. We did this for a variety of reasons. One, we were trying to account for the concepts of sea level rise. But two, we're also acknowledging that as a coastal community, a lot of the floodplain overlap is with critical areas. So you already have these lots that are constrained and most people are already elevating. When they do elevate, well above the current freeboard. Because they want to park under their homes. Cause if you want covered parking, but you want to conserve the amount of impervious surface for maybe say you wanna pool or something else. That's the most efficient way to do it and it's a very popular method. We also uh, have the FEMA hazard mitigation grants. Which can not only do the acquisitions as you heard earlier, but we have elevation grants through FEMA. And that's just what most people do is they elevate them to the point where they're able to park under them. So we're simply acknowledging that. Reality of what's occurring on the ground, but we're also trying to prepare ourselves for storm events, sea level rise and the like.
That's right. I'll also add, we do have a, a flood mitigation plan for Brooms Island. That does recommend that the county raise the flood protection elevation. So this is something that's been discussed for a little bit of a, a time here. And I just wanna add to what Ron said. A- according to FEMA commission cost benefit comparison, incorporating freeboard into new building construction. Can range from a quarter of a, of a percent to one and a half percent of the total uh, construction costs for each foot of freeboard. However, the property owner will will pay a lower flood insurance premium and reduce the risk of sustaining flood damages in the long term.
I also want to add, this is also going to play into the C R S program where that's going to give us more credit. And one of my principal goals is to get us to a class six, which will give everyone a twenty percent discount.
So floodplain regulations like meeting the flood protection elevation are required for new buildings and structures. And they're also required for when an existing structure undergoes a substantial improvement. Another revision proposed in the draft zoning ordinance update is in the definition of substantial improvement that you can see in the red text. What this does is more clearly define the scope uh, and time period for which the substantial improvement requirements would kick in. The proposed new dev- uh, deva- definition of substantial improvement in the draft makes it clear that a substantial improvement is any combination of repairs. We can reconstruction, rehabilitation, addition or other improvement of a structure taking place during a ten year period. The cumulative cost of which equals or exceeds fifty percent of the market value of the structure before the start of construction of the improvement.
So if I um, do a restoration on my house. It's gonna trigger this nail.
If you reach the fifty percent threshold, it is now a substantial improvement uh, under FEMA guidelines. And that's gonna be fifty percent the value of the structure, not the structure in the land.
If I put an addition on. What's the difference if I do an addition between what you, what's currently in and what's proposed?
Uh, other than the uh, ten year periods, like currently, the way it's not, we are doing it uh, under the current regulations is it's to the. Beginning of time for your uh, record. So I'll go back as far as we have reliable records to total it. We specifically went with ten year to one, be more equitable to the property owner and two. FEMA wasn't giving us credit for the substantial improvement. So again, this is giving us more C R S credit because they wanted to define timeframe with ten years being uh, the most common that you tend to see.
Okay, so in summary, article twenty-two critical area. Revised how the critical area buffer for steep slopes is delineated. Some disturbances of the, of the critical area buffer propose to require. Uh, administrative approval instead of having to go through the board of appeals variance process. Article twenty-three marine and water dependent facilities revised to clarify that private peers are allowed on undeveloped properties with a repairing right. That are in contiguous with a property lacking repairing right that has a dwelling. And article twenty-four floodplain revised definition of substantial improvement and the flood protection elevation raised from two feet to four feet. So although the, the discussion seems to have already begun, I, I think at, at this time, staff requests that the board of county commissioners discuss. Draft articles twenty-two and through twenty-four and some of the proposed revisions and direct staff regarding any recommended changes to the draft articles.
So what's before us today is discuss those proposed changes that you've got in this presentation and if we wanna move forward with those or not, correct?
Or anything else related to these articles that you.
Don't open it up to that.
I'm, I'm fine with what we have in front of us now. If I, if I am understanding everything properly, okay?
And if there is not comfort with things such as the marine, the, the admin variance for those uh, marine facilities impacts. That's within the board's discretion to direct us.
My thing was to be able to be more restrictive and it sounds like we are.
Yeah, we're, we're fairly restrictive. We're, we're, we tighten up where appropriate and I think we do a really good job with it. Again, as part of the uh, any variance process, we can make, we should be able to, John can correct me, be able to add reasonable conditions to any variance approval.
And and um, I wanted somebody, if they had a couple acres or what have you, a property to be able to put a pier on there as long as, you know. That to go fishing or sit there and stuff. I mean, that's not, you know, the same as building some monstrosity, but to be able to.
Oh yeah, we, we, we agreed we wanted those private peers to be an option. That's just like any other accessory structure. That's why we, what we modeled it after is the exemptions for other accessory structures.
That was my two biggest concerns.
We don't have to vote today.
No.
They're looking for guidance. So if you have any significant issues with what they propose, nail would be the time.
Listening to the next two steps in the public's eyes also.
Well, it looks like there's a lot of public input. We have a lot of emails here. I haven't had a chance to go through all of them. I would like to have a chance to get through all of them just to see if there are any other significant concerns that I could see through it.
There's still time for that. So.
A lot of time. Um, so unless anyone, any commissioners have anything that they'd like to add. Just to close things out, like we said from the beginning of the process, our schedule is fluid and flexible. And adjustments are gonna be made as we go through this process and we have made some adjustments. We've recently updated the schedule on the zoning ordinance update website. We've reduced the number of articles and focus for some of the. The cycles of public comment periods and forums and work sessions to ensure that uh, no one is overwhelmed. Um, during any one cycle. Um, and we've extended the timeline a little further into twenty twenty-four. And so the next group of articles and focus will be articles thirty, thirty-two and thirty-three zoning approvals, variances and appeals. Non-conformities and enforcement. And the uh, open, the next open public comment period for those articles will be October ninth. Through the November third. Next public forum is scheduled for October twenty-sixth. And the next joint work session is scheduled for November fifteenth.
I think that what we, we, what we wanna ensure is that the public has every opportunity to understand what's being proposed. And an opportunity to comment, I think is the main goal here in this process. That, you know, while we'd like to get it done as soon as we can, we don't wanna rush and not have people. Understand what they're agreeing to or not agreeing to, so.
There seems to be a lot of public involvement, which is great.
And I will apologize. It just bugs me that, you know, my farm is in critical areas and I can't build but one house on twenty acres. But if I have a farm in critical areas in the town center, I can build apartment builds or hotels or whatever I want.
Amen.
If we're here to protect the water, then it should be pretty even to me, but that's not how this works, so.
The water doesn't know it's in the town center or not.
It just kinda bugs me.
And I wanna, yeah, but we're going to fix that, correct?
Do what we can.
We are gonna do what we can within the confines of state law, but uh.
Hope we can be more restrictive was the definition. As a county.
I mean, we don't, we don't have anything that would prohibit it contrary to state law in the current draft. So if there are some suggested edits, we can get that, if, let us know what you're looking for, we can get that in there.
Twenty percent I would like to see that, uh, because Commissioner Hans is absolutely right. You know, he could have this huge space, but yet family member can't build a house. But I could have something and I can build some monstrosity or whatever, cause I learned how to play the game right. It shouldn't be like that. So that's just, just my twenty percent. I would like to see this in ordinance that we put in there that.
And we can do something similar to like say the Solomon's tree canopy incorporated into this where it doesn't matter whether you're in I D A or not. Cause that's gonna be what really makes the big difference is whether your I D A versus L D A versus R C A.
We tell people they can't have a shed in an area that has water and sewer. Okay, and you know I, you know what I'm talking about.
I do.
Okay, and we wanna find this high, but yet I can build some two hundred or three hundred unit place or whatever. And that's okay. There, you will never explain that logic to anybody. So.
Like a conflict.
Yeah, you know.
This portion of Comar, I, I've heard from many an attorney, it's not very well written.
That shed don't use schools, that shed don't use the roads, that shed don't tap water.
Might catch on fire, might need a fire truck.
That's about all. And it's close enough to the water, push it in. So you know what I'm saying? I mean, this is the time. I, 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 you know, people worried about comprehensive plans. No, this is where the teeth is. This is the stuff that matters. This is zoning. So.
So just for my own clarity, are you more, are we, is the concern, so that we can actually try and incorporate, is the concern regarding around? The density as it relates to the critical area or is it rela-?
Absolutely.
Or is it relating to lot covered and forest cover?
Mine's density. Absolutely, all day, every day. And, and, cause, cause you, and I'm just gonna say it. I don't really care. I mean, and everybody knows where I come from. I don't really care. Built out what you could build out. Now it's looking for whatever's left, okay, in any place and anywhere. And the problem is, it's just too big for, it affects schools, it affects everything. It's not just the peace. They want you to believe it's just the peace and that's not it. It affects everything from traffic to crime to everything. You know, your way of life and to Commissioner. Yeah, to Commissioner Hans's point, if we're gonna be that restrictive, which, okay, we're gonna be that restrictive where he, he can't build a house for his own child. Then how in the world are we gonna allow something else like that? There's no way. Not my twenty anyway. So if we can be more restrictive. My twenty percent, I would like to see it in there, like to see it go for a vote and be made public and, and, and then let another board come in and tell those people. No, I know this is what you wanted, but we're going to do this anyway. because a individual wants it. That's how I would like to see it go.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney, that brings us to public comment.
Thank you, sir. Board of County Commissioners adopted a resolution in 1989 intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. Copy is found here to my right. Then by Resolution 51-20, persons are welcome to address the Board of County Commissioners on any matter germane to the business of county government. Persons addressing the board shall refrain from statements, remarks, or conduct that is uncivil, rude, vulgar, profane, or otherwise disruptive to the conduct of the board's business. All speakers must identify themselves, and whether speaking as an individual, will you be allocated two minutes, or as the appointed spokesperson of a group, will you be allocated five? For those attending, well, there's nobody attending virtually, so Mr. Souza, please identify yourself with the microphone, and whether speaking as an individual or as the designated representative.
I'm Leonard Souza. I'm speaking on behalf of the concerned residents of Solomons. Um, before I get into the reason why I came here in the first place, uh, those of you who have seen my, my business card, see me as considering myself an environmental advocate. I cannot thank you enough for the tough positions that you are taking on, the rezoning that is being done in an effort to protect the environment. I am greatly encouraged to hear that, and particularly given there's so much going on around Solomons now, that, uh, that the name has come up several times, and I appreciate it. So why am I here? Um, I'm here because last Wednesday evening, Mr. Doug Witt from United Bridge Partners addressed a public forum down in, uh, down in Lesby at the Southern Community Center. And, um, what I have done is I have distributed to you a report that I prepared on that particular presentation. Um, there are three points that I want to bring to your attention in regard to the proposed toll bridge that Mr. Witt is proposing to build here. Uh, the first is that I went back and looked at the video of your June 27th hearing where Mr. Witt talked to you about the proposed toll bridge. He told you that the value of that bridge would be $500 million. Last Wednesday, the value of that bridge dropped to $300 million. So I'm about to make a tongue-in-cheek recommendation that you ask Mr. Witt to come back again in two more months, and probably the value of that bridge will drop to $100 million, which should reduce the tolls that would be charged for that particular facility. The second thing that I wanted to talk about is the tolls. And at that meeting the other night, Wednesday night, Calvert citizens were particularly upset about the tolls. And just as you, Commissioner Grasso, started the discussion of the tolls in detail at the June 27th meeting, and Commissioner Hart jumped in with a very energetic discussion of it, as was joined by the rest of you all. I think it's very understandable that residents are concerned about how much they're going to have to pay each way, uh, in crossing that particular bridge. But the reason I'm here is, I spent a career in finance, and if there's one thing I learned, it's the time value of money. And the one thing that Mr. Witt refused to answer was a question by a woman of, how long is it going to take you to pay off that bridge? I know that if we get used to a bridge that's there, and it's going to have a set toll, people are going to stop thinking about, gee, how much money have they gotten back? As I've done a quick and dirty calculation, the timeframe for their recoupment of their investment at different tolls would vary from anywhere from eight years to 12 years. Any time period beyond that would provide the company, United Bridge Partners, some additional revenue that would cover legitimate profit. I'm in no way attacking profit. I think that that's the reason they're in business, and that's what they're doing. But the fact that Mr. Witt refused to address that when that woman asked him the question, he just said, I'm not going to answer that, and it didn't come up in the hearing with you, is something that bothers me, because when and if the citizens of Calvert and St. Mary's Counties might be inclined to want to have a toll bridge put in there, I am here to encourage you to please, 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 take into account not just the short-term costs of the tolls, but take in the long-term considerations and costs about the amortization. Uh, that is going to be equally important for the long-term financial health of Calvert County, as well as the citizens. So, um, I came here determined that, given how late it is in the day, I don't want you to go home late for supper, so I will end my comment there with a thank you for your vigorous questioning of Mr. Witt in the past and the individuals here from planning and zoning on the environment. Uh, I am greatly encouraged to see your, the attention you're paying to that subject and the importance of it for the citizens of this county, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, sir, there's nobody on line either.
Thank you. That brings us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Cox?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, remind everybody, let's keep, uh, the Harris family in your prayers for a tough time for next couple weeks they have had. Uh, we had a good ribbon cutting at Jake's, uh, Produce and Corn Maze. Uh, the fair had a good week in attendance, it looks like. Um, and just a reminder, we have a golf classic golf tournament this Friday at the golf course, and Saturday is Patuxent River Appreciation Day in Solomons. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ireland?
So on the 21st, I attended Huntington Voluntar Fire Department hosted a 911 day where 911 dispatchers throughout the state were recognized. Stanley Harrison and his team did a great job putting this event together. Also with the CTA, they had the chicken and waffles, toured the new case program classroom. It was a very nice facility, all new equipment. Um, the teacher was very, uh, very excited about it. Um, toured the Twin Beaches Library with Commissioner Grasso, uh, very open concept, uh, some wonderful views at the bay there. Uh, they're looking forward to, um, opening, and I think they got drywall up this week. As Commissioner Cox said, we attended, uh, the ribbon cutting at Jake's Produce for the corn maze and play area. Uh, on Sunday, uh, the Mistranquility and Lord Calvert, uh, were named, and I read proclamations to Brett Shranko and Olivia Oller. Congratulations to both of them. Uh, they actually gave their speeches that day, and, uh, like I said, the final decision was made there. As Commissioner Cox also said, the fair had wonderful weather, 4H auction went well. Um, as mentioned earlier in the day, Holly at the Hospice Hall raised over $27,000 for Calvert Hospice slash Hospice to the Chesapeake. Uh, I actually had seven entries in the fair, and I won some first and second for my, for my pickles and my, uh, pickled beets and my, uh, billy beans, and I won $23.
Hot dog.
Yeah. And as I said, Pratt is, is this weekend. Um, uh, they have over 30 arts and craft vendors and close to 40 nonprofit organizations, music, food, toy, boat building, free boat rides, model boat sailing, shark visiting, the boat basin, uh, and it's free. It's a free event, great family event. Uh, hopefully, uh, look forward to seeing everybody there.
Thank you, Commissioner Ireland. Commissioner Grasso?
On September 20th, I attended the farm tour, and, um, I tell you, I will never get sick of, I will never get sick of growing and learning and finding out what our citizens do in this county and how they contribute to our way of life in this county. It was wonderful. I also, as Commissioner Ireland said, attended Twin Beaches. Um, you know, a lot of people say, oh, people don't take books out anymore, but as we toured that, uh, library, it, it's going to be a hub for the community, and it, it's just going to offer so much. Kids who maybe don't have computers at home, or have a computer, another, uh, another child is using, they'll be able to go there, there'll be activities for young and old. I did attend on the 23rd Dave McDowell's retirement party. I want to give a shout out to his wife, Michelle. She did a wonderful job. And on the 29th, uh, we celebrated 20 years of North Beach Senior Center being in existence. Um, I was there quite often when I was, uh, running for county commissioner. That place and, and others like it really adds so much to our community. As we age, our circle decreases, and for these people, seniors of which I am one, the ability to go there and to, um, be with friends and, um, do certain activities just to add to their life and to expand their circle is probably one of the most important things we do in this county. Also attended Jefferson Patterson Park and Museum's 40th anniversary, and our, um, Commissioner President always amazes me. Buddy, you did a great job. I mean, the, the history he has in this county and-
Mole.
Yeah, well, you've been here for a while, but he, he did a great job.
I think it was Lord Calvert first, or Buddy, I'm not sure.
And then Buddy.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure who got off the boat first, uh.
But he, he really added so much to the evening, as did people from the very beginning with Jeff Pat. And I did attend the county fair, and, um, along with Commissioner Hans, we got a hog, and he bid on it, and I watched the process, and our little sucker's being cut up as we speak. So, uh, that's it. Was that fair?
Cycle of life.
It is.
I thought you named him Bacon, I wasn't sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hart?
Um, Commissioner Grasso has said, um, uh, once again, congratulations to Dave McDowell and his retirement. They did a fine job, and if Commissioner Ireland ever goes into the barbecue business, boy, somebody's in trouble, because that food was fantastic.
Always is.
And I just want to thank the people that, that put on the fair. That's not an easy chore, um, and it's what really makes small towns great, you know, and, um, I mean, when even my kid's talking about it, I didn't know he knows how anything besides a sports field or his bedroom, um, but, uh, so that was, that was really cool, and thank you to them. And once again, with Pratt coming, you know, people don't go out to Pratt like they used to. I hope people really go back to Pratt. I'd, I'd hate to lose that, you know, that was something that was really big when I was a kid, because you didn't have all the distractions, so that's something we all looked forward to, so, um, it is a really good event. If you've never been, um, hopefully you'll go, and that's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. So I too attended the farm tour, and I want to thank all those that hosted us that day. I think we made five stops. Especially want to thank Susan Walt Wells for hosting us for lunch. Um, not everybody gets the privilege to go down to their farm, but they got a pretty nice view from where they are, and we had a wonderful lunch under the oak trees that day. So, uh, I want to thank them, and as, uh, Commissioner Grasso mentioned, we did Friday night celebrate the 40th anniversary of Jefferson Patterson Park Museum. If you've never been there, you should go, it's a wonderful facility, and take a hike. Um, also went to the fair, I think they had a, you know, weather's the most important factor to having a successful fair, and I think they had a pretty successful fair, and, um, they did have a good lifestyle auction, and, uh, did get Commissioner Grasso some to participate, so, uh, I think she'll be very happy in a couple days. Um, and, uh, then, uh, la- last week, I did jump on a plane, went to Wyoming for five days, uh, was on my bucket list, and, uh, you know, people talk about traveling around the world, but I've decided that, uh, there's so much in this country to see that, uh, I don't need to get on a plane and fly across an ocean. Uh, it's a beautiful country, and anybody that skis off the top of those mountains is certifiably crazy. Because, uh, we went to the top of the Jackson Hole Ski Resort, it's 12,000 feet, and it's straight down. And, uh, last year, they had a record snowfall, 595 inches.
Wow.
And, uh, this year, the prediction, prediction is they're going to have another big winter, but, uh, yeah, standing up on top of there and thinking, I'm going to jump off of there with two skinny boards on my feet and go down, uh, just can't comprehend that, but people do it all the time, pay a lot of money. Um, it's good for the doctors, anyway. But we did have, I went to Yellowstone, saw Old Faithful, and lots of animals, and, uh, it was, it was a really cool trip, and next time I'm going to Montana, so, um, it's on my list. Uh, just want to remind everybody that there's an honor flight ceremony tonight at Dunkirk Park at 7:00, where we're going to recognize some of our veterans, our senior veterans from, uh, age of 73 to 106, if I remember correctly. Um, so if you want to participate in that, and today in our meeting, you heard a lot of discussion about domestic violence, because it's Domestic Violence Prevention Month, and then we had a presentation, uh, it's, it is a significant issue, but there are resources. If you're in a situation, if you know of someone in a situation, uh, there, there are resources and people out here willing to help you, and that number is 1-877-467-5628. Please, pick up a phone before it's too late. There's help. Uh, and I think that concludes my report, so Commissioner Hart, do you have a motion for me?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I move to recess to executive session pursuant to general provisions, Article Section 3-305B, 1I, and 3-305B8, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees or officials of over whom the board has jurisdiction. Consult with staff, consultants, and other individuals about pending or potential litigation.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to go into executive session. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Everybody have a great day.
Thank you.